Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Polika?
Here.
Mayor Proton Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. And we have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Is there any discussion? I guess the one thing I would do is, we have two presentations this evening. I'm guessing that the second one is shorter than the first one, and I see, yes, Reverend from United Methodist Church, and I'd like to switch the order of those two if that's acceptable to you and Dan.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just for clarity, what's the second presentation on my agenda, just the West Troy parking deck?
The United Methodist Church Sanctuary, what do we, Marnie, what is it officially called? I have the old agenda too.
I'm Sanctuary Church.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good. All right, any discussion on the agenda? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. So now moving on to presentations, and our first presentation is by the United Methodist Church of Ferndale, and we are so glad to have you here tonight, Reverend.
Just have a brief statement to read if that's acceptable.
All right.
Please do. And first, thank you for allowing us these few minutes in your agenda. We really appreciate it. So, good to see all of you here, your civic engagement tonight. The scriptures of the Jewish, Christian, and Muslim traditions all declare that God is clearly concerned about the fair treatment and welcome of persons that we might call immigrants, refugees, or simply foreigners. And the current atmosphere in Washington, in various locations around the country, and in other parts of the world, inspired the leaders of our congregation, First United Methodist Church of Ferndale, to vote on February 5 to become what is called a sanctuary church, part of a movement that involves, at this point, at least 450 other congregations throughout the country. Working through the auspices of the organization, Michigan United, it simply means that we will support the rights of immigrants and their families to remain together and to remain in this country. And this might involve providing meals or transportation, advising or helping with other needs of immigrants, and ultimately, if it should come to that, we would house an immigrant family in our church for their protection until the situation is resolved. As a perceived act of civil disobedience, some would say that we intend to break the law. That's not how we see it. We respond that we are standing for justice for those who often have no one to speak for them or to shelter them from threats of deportation. Practically speaking, this means that we are modifying our facility slightly to make it more conducive for a family to stay there temporarily if necessary. Now, within our relatively small congregation here in Ferndale, in addition to those of us of European ancestry, we have persons who have immigrated here from Jamaica, Cuba, Costa Rica, Ghana, as well as those whose ancestors were brought here against their will as slaves, all within this congregation here in Ferndale. We want all of us and all of our other neighbors to feel safe and welcome in this country, in the city, and in this church. So those from our congregation who are here tonight are here to inform our community and you, the council, of our decision, and to request your support, at least in principle, of what we are doing. And if you wish to make a statement of support, we would be most grateful, but at any rate, we trust that this is in keeping with the council's own statement of welcome for immigrants. Regardless, we are proud to be a part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend, and well said. Our next presentation this evening is a presentation on the West Troy parking development update, and our Assistant City Manager, Joe Gaochow, will give that presentation. And then, so let me just clarify, we'll modify the agenda just slightly so that, I'm going to guess that some of you are here because of this topic, and that you might actually want to address council on it. And rather than waiting until we get to call the audience, you have an opportunity, if you'd like, right after this presentation, I'll open it up to comments, and we'll treat it like a call to audience, three minutes a person and all of that, but we'll give you a chance, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, to address this topic after Joe concludes, okay? So Joe, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am here tonight to give a presentation on just an update and the progress made in terms of the West Troy parking development. And that progress speaks to the agenda item tonight, which would be to approve moving forward with design, which we have not done yet. So to start off, I'd like to introduce some context and just recap where we've been. About a year ago, actually, today, we approved of a RFQ process that would allow us to move forward with investigating lots in our downtown to pursue development for mixed-use parking. So to do that, we did site surveys on three different lots. We did geotechnical soil samples on each lot, which just means we have to go below the surface lot to see whether it's buildable or not. And we did site capacity studies, what kind of parking capacity could each of these sites deliver. We brought forth results to Downtown Parking Committee, which is made up by a mixture of business owners and property owners, as well as resident representation. And we presented our findings, and then they unanimously approved the selection of Lot 6, which is called the West Troy Parking Development. We brought that recommendation to the DDA Board in October 2016, and the DDA Board unanimously approved it. And then, after those two approvals, we brought it to City Council during the October 24th meeting, just to present the site selection. And City Council approved it on October 24th. After approval, we jumped into, whoops, animation is different, we jumped into the schematic, or the public engagement round. And so I wanted, before I move into the details, I'm going to recap the public engagement and the schematic design, what's been done to date, but I wanted to just offer you a glimpse of what the roadmap for a project like this looks like. So we have gone through the gray dots on the left, and the little map pin icon represents where we're at tonight, which is the decision to move forward with some design concepts. And moving forward after that, we'll go into another round of public engagement, where we would give the public an opportunity to glimpse a couple concepts and to provide some feedback. Upon that, we would make those tweaks and bring that back to the Planning Commission, which is a public meeting as well. And I would encourage the public, anyone interested in this project, to attend the Planning Commission meetings as we move through the site plan review process, which I'll go into a little bit later. And then upon final approval from the Planning Commission on a concept, we would move forward with issuing construction RFPs, and then we will be looking into groundbreaking. And that's just a high-level view of the roadmap of this project. So moving on to the next phase, I want to just recap a little bit about Phase 1, the first public engagement. I'd like to point out, we first launched a project website because we knew that common availability of resources was a priority, and transparency was a priority. So we launched www.parkferndale.com. There's a little picture of a tablet and a phone, that just is telling you that it's responsive, so you can get it, and it'll adapt to whatever device you're on. Also renders well on a laptop. And then a little mobile phone here, unfortunately, the words don't make out, but here it says subscribe for alerts. So that's an important piece of communication that we also put in place. So you can subscribe for alerts, and some of, you might have received an alert that I sent out about this meeting on Friday, letting the public know that we were having this meeting, this conversation. So once the project website was out, we immediately issued some surveys to businesses and residents located around the site, I believe it was within a 500-foot radius. Of 300 surveys that we issued, we received 75 surveys back, which is a good response rate, that's pretty healthy. We held, after that, we held a residential focus group where we discussed the survey results, and we just talked with the group of residents about this project. And then we held and offered a separate business focus group to talk about business concerns, recognizing that this site, as well as every site in our downtown, borders both a residential area and a business area. So it's going to impact, no matter where we build both sites, and we knew that. We wanted to pay homage to that by offering two distinct focus groups. And then we also offered a general open invitation to a public meeting. All of these meetings were held at the library, and we did invite specifically those who responded to the surveys, as well as those within the mailing radius, the same mailing Some common themes around the public engagement feedback we heard, and I would also point out that we've been, transparency, again, was a priority for this project from the start. So for good or bad, whatever comments were given to the city on the surveys, we published, so they've been available, and I've seen them referenced, so that's good news for me. I'm glad that people are looking at the materials and the website. A theme that carried through on development, no matter what it looks like in Ferndale, is it has to have Ferndale's character, and it has to be respectful of Ferndale's history. And so that ranked through both in the surveys, as well as in face-to-face feedback from businesses and residents. So that's an important point, and that's why we highlighted that in green, Ferndale's character. Two, solving the parking bottleneck. That's the number-one issue that was charged for the Downtown Parking Committee. This site represents the biggest bottleneck in terms of parking capacity overflow. This site needs to supply the most. So that was effectively communicated, that no matter what we do, we have to solve the parking problem in Ferndale. So that was consistent through every kind of response and feedback that we got. Number three would be heightening privacy concerns. So I think this spoke mostly to the residential concerns, but there's a lot of concerns, of course, with privacy. If you're going to be building vertically for the first time, there's some concerns about flipping, watching me flip my burger, we heard that was a consistent theme. So those, you know, not watching you flip your burger has to be in the calculus in terms of any design implication. And we understood that, we heard that, and our architect is here today, and he'll speak about that, too, if asked. And then four, concerns over mixed use. There was a lot of conversation about whether the city needs mixed use, whether the appropriate direction is just a deck, or whether it's a deck that would incorporate other uses, such as office or retail and/or residential. We also took that time to do studies, and so, of course, as soon as the site was selected, we worked with Republic Parking Systems Corporate to conduct a supply and demand study. And we worked with the DDA to get the current business mix that borders a lot, so we understand the breakdown of residential, retail, and how that breaks down. The number of employees who have passes, we looked at that information, and then we looked at car counting, in terms of customer visitations. So the report that we have, I'll walk you through from left to right here. Left is the current situation, and I think if I hover over here, if I did this well enough, that the number should, it did not. I did not. Epic fail.
Oh my goodness.
But that was cool, right? See that again. So starting from left to right, I'll just read off the bar chart, I'm sorry, it's probably small, oh, I forgot, bar on UTV, so you can also look at that side. Currently, there's 138 parking spaces available on that site, at the West Troy Surface Lot. Peak hour demand, that means, this is the busiest time of the day, when there's the most cars on this one spot, the peak hour demand, that means we have 163 cars. So that's about 25 cars over the site. What that just means is that's people circling, and that's people waiting and doing the circle train, I think we've all seen that, for anyone who's been out there. Going into 2019, this would assume that a deck has been built, and that the deck that has been built has street-level retail, the deck has up to two levels of office. And looking at that, the demand, as we say, which is the amount of spaces in the deck, would be 390 spaces. So I'll just pause and reframe that, we've gone from 138 to 390. And then you look at the, we wanted to make sure that we could meet not only the current business needs, but also the new business needs that would be introduced to the site through the office and/or retail. So looking at that, you know, Republic Parking System has a model, and they have a ramp-up model, because you're not going to launch a deck and have it 100% occupied the first year. So the assumption would be 50% occupation in the first year, in the second year, you see more success and growth, and it grows to 75%. And then the third year is, and onward, is 90 to 100%. At that point, you have a deck that's likely leased up in terms of retail and office space. And you have businesses that are bordering the deck, you have their employees using it on a more common basis, as well as their customers. So looking at that, you'll see that the blue column represents capacity, and the green column represents demand. It does account for the current and the future demand, and we never exceed capacity. I'm happy to say that. The actual numbers are 390 in capacity, and at peak hour, we would have 337 spaces in demand, which is right about where you want to be. The parking industry standard is to try to have a lot at most at 85% capacity. The reason being is that, once a lot is over 85% capacity, people are more inclined to move on or start circling, rather than look for the open spot. So that's kind of the golden rule. We'll watch that again. And this just breaks down the current user mix of the lot. So start looking at the pie chart, you look at the green that represents R&amp;R. R&amp;R is restaurant-retail, we just lumped them in together. So this is just looking at this segment bordering the lot right now, the current business mix. You have 55% of the service lot being used by restaurant-retail, you have 37% being used by their employees, this is peak hour, and you have 7% office employee. Office would include graphic artists, attorneys, things like that, small business office. So on the right, you'll see a summary, 90% of the lot is taken up right now with restaurant-retail, whether it's employee and/or customer, it's at 90%. And the peak hour demand currently is at 7 to 9. I'm sure, again, if anyone's been out there, you've probably noticed that 7 to 9 is pretty busy. One thing that tells us is that daytime foot traffic is needed. We have looked at the stats, and at lunch, all city lots do a little bit better, like you would expect for the lunch crowds. But looking at the data, there's a lot of open capacity that's underutilized during the day through 1 to 5, which might suggest that daytime business, introducing a daytime business mechanism like an office, or additional retail would help drive foot traffic, which I think is one of the goals. So again, the two bullets to summarize is daytime foot traffic needed, and you have a nighttime supply shortfall, which we know. We'll watch the cool transition again, that's the last of them, though, so enjoy that. Here with the mixed-use development, you have 37% restaurant-retail, but now you have 30% office employee. And what that does is that introduces that daytime foot traffic element. So you'll notice on the left, when I summarize this, the assumptions, and this is assuming, this is now at full capacity, we had to assume that. So this is a 2021, you'll note. You have 30% office employee and 37% restaurant-retail, so you've distributed the demand over the day, rather than seizing most of the demand at night. What that does is introduce a daytime population that's using the deck now consistently, Monday through Friday, during typical office hours, you would imagine, 9 to 5. Now, the interesting thing about that is when the office employees leave at 9 to 5, they're no longer using their capacity that they were using up, which frees capacity for the nighttime businesses, which we currently need the most, that's where we need it the most. So the net effect is that actually moves the peak hour demand, when we got the most cars between 7 to 9, down to 3 to 6. So effectively, we're meeting supply both during the daytime and the nighttime hours. I think a good point there is it helps avoid an empty deck during the day, which I'm sure is something nobody wants, so the office would supposedly provide that capacity during the day. Next, if you remember the roadmap, we went to schematic design phase, which is Phase 2. And this is a little bit more the due diligence phase, it's a less showy phase, but first and foremost, we looked at the zoning ordinance, so we have to see what the current zoning permits for this site, and what a planned unit development process would look like according to our zoning ordinance, so we got a good lay of the land right there. We do have our Economic Development Director, Jordan Tordy, with us, who can round out those answers a little bit better than I, if there are any questions later, he's prepared to answer those. We reviewed the master land use objectives, that was a plan that was just passed in January. So we took January and February to review that and review some of the specific language around the site. There were some specific objectives identified in the MLUP update around this site and development, so we want to make sure that we understand what those development goals are. And then we met with utilities. So we met with DTE, they're busy, so we, you want to get in their pipeline early enough, so we made them aware of the project, and some of the goals around building, and then just the telecom as well. And then we talked about some internet providers who could bring fiber. So if we look at this site, we would look at trying to prevent, to enhance internet access for both the downtown business community and the bordering residential community. So we had some interesting discussions there. And secondly, we'd like to point out, the city's a model here. We are bound to do, to be the standard bearer in terms of how this development is built. So the point would be that we would have to follow our own zoning guidelines, and we must follow our own zoning guidelines, it'd be the beacon for the business community to follow. So I guess I just wanted to make it very clear that we expect to treat ourselves like any other developer, which means going through the PUD process, which I walked through at the beginning. And to make sure the standards for design and public use are high. You know, we want the Planning Commission to be critical of whatever that we bring forth, and ask sharp questions that they would normally shop any, that they would normally ask any business person who's presenting a development. And then programming research, we took this time to send out surveys to business owners to find preferences for programming. We understand that during construction, it's going to disrupt businesses, and we have an obligation to support those businesses, and I'll speak on that with the DDA Director a little bit later. But we wanted the survey to find out preferences. We are willing to invest significant dollars, and we budgeted to invest significant dollars to support you, and we want to make sure that whatever we throw out there to support you resonates, and is impactful for you. The DDA conducted some business-to-business visitations, I know he has his own schedule, and again, Barry will speak on that later. And we wanted to explore what kind of budget, we wanted to round out and see what kind of budget is available for supporting this project during its duration. Also, please ask me to pause if you have any questions throughout that. We also took this time to look at some other area projects. We have a couple in the region. One will start on the left, Royal Oak. Royal Oak actually has a construction project underway right now, it's the Second Street Parking Deck Project. It is right next to their first, I think it's their first, one of their principal decks, Center Street, I believe, is what they said.
Across from the post office.
Yes, yes, across from the post office, if anyone's in. That developments is going to be 550 parking spaces, seven levels. It will be precast, and it'll be a single-use deck. They came in just a bit over their bond, they bonded for 13 and 1/2. Their lowest bid estimate came in at 15. They said the construction market, that was, that would have came in November, December, I think he said. So he said, right now, the commodities market is just fluctuated at that point when they were out, and it was higher. So the city and the DDA have agreed to pay the balance between the 1 and 1/2 million overage. They estimate it to be 12 months, it's under construction right now, they started construction in January, they said they expect to be open to the public in next January. And that the, this deck is also a bigger, a piece of a bigger picture. They have a good problem, they have 75,000 square feet of office that were coming down, and the tenant had requested a commitment of parking supply if they were going to move 75,000 square feet of office into their downtown. And so that was a piece of their calculus as well. Also, in their long-term plan, they had shared that their Center Street deck is currently getting ready to end its useful life, so they don't expect that deck to be in play in the next eight years, they said about eight years. So they designed this deck to absorb that capacity once they phase out the Center Street deck. Then on the right, you have a use case, Rochester. This was a project from 2014 and 15. I went out to Rochester with the DDA Director, and we met Nick Bander, their Economic Development Director, and we met their DDA Director, too, and we did a site walk of each facility. And they kind of walked us through their process, so they built two single-use parking platforms, and they put them in separate locations downtown. They also yielded 550 spaces, they started out with 750, they ended up at 550. I think numbers crunching was part of the challenge. And they had shallow foundations, which enabled them to get going quicker, and I'll go into that in a little bit, in more detail. Their project in total was 12 million, it was between 2014 and 15, as I said. The smaller platform, they did something creative, they built a small little platform, the 250 spaces of that 550, and they did that in six months in their downtown, I can't remember the street, but it's off Little Hill, by the brewery. And then they didn't end up charging, so the city and DDA are paying the majority of the bond, but the businesses are charged what they call a special assessment district, an SAD. And so the businesses are paying $250,000 a year towards the bond, not one business that's spread out through the businesses, I think, that are adjacent to the site. So that's how they're supporting that. And there's just a picture for the viewing public online of what that, I think, I'm not sure which platform that is, but that's one of them, that was from the Detroit News. Is that just artist rendering, I don't know if that's an actual... And then, so it's tonight's agenda, that kind of brings us full-front to tonight's agenda. So I wanted to make an update, this is the first update of this kind, is that we are viewing this project in a phased way. So Phase 1 would kind of represent what we're showing on the left, the timeline is expected to be 12 to 15 months, and that would result in a four levels of parking, so the deck construction, street-level retail box included in that first level. And I want to be clear on that, the first level is street-level retail and parking, it's not an and, it's not an or scenario, it's both. So both will be achieved. That represents alley improvements, that was made loud and clear by residents during the focus group, that if you're going to develop at this location, we would prefer the alley to be enhanced, and not looking at a brick wall is more or less what they told me. So we're looking at different opportunities there, whether it be green alley or rear facade screening, that could represent a lot of different ways, and that's going to shake out as we go through the design process. And then streetscape improvements, there was some interest in some original concepts of looking at West Troy as a possible temporary events plaza. It's not something that's closed permanently, but it's something that could be closed for an event, farmer's market, if you will, things of that nature. You can pull out temporary bollards, and you would reconstruct the streetscape to accommodate for this, flattening the curbs and just accommodating a good welcoming environment. So that streetscape work, looking at landscaping and sustainability, possibly considering some little public spaces, such as pocket perks, seeing if that could be incorporated. And again, these are the details that'll come out in the design process when we're having these discussions with the public, and we get a better sense of what the public at large wants to talk about with that. And then on the right side, you look at cost estimate ranges, and these are, you see two numbers under each section, that's low and high, that just kind of gives you the range that we're playing with in terms of estimating. But again, I would point back to that Royal Oak example, you can estimate as much as you can estimate, but when you receive the bids back, the market sometimes dictates the final output. So the parking deck construction, just the deck itself, this is four levels, is looking at between 9 and 1/2 to 12 million. The retail space to construct that, and that would include engineering for the HVAC, and any other mechanical for, to accommodate that space, would be a million and 1/2 to 2 million. The transfer floor for future use would be 2 to 2 and 1/2 million. And what that does is, if you build a deck by using cast-and-place methods, you could build a transfer floor that would enable you to build development on top of this deck in the future, whenever that future may be. And we'll go into that in a minute, too, but that's called the transfer floor slab, that can only be done with a cast-and-place, it cannot be done for structural engineering reasons with precast. And then the special events plaza is, and the green alley is looking to be a combination about a million and 1/2 to 2 million, for both. The bond payment, we have, we expect to issue later this summer up to $20 million in bonds to pay for this. The city's auto parking fund will be responsible for making payments on that bond, and I want to be clear there that the auto parking fund is separate than the general fund, which is a tax, kind of what the tax base supports, general services fund. The auto parking fund is paid for parking system revenues, whatever you pay at the meter, that's what supports this, so parking activity supports investment in parking deck. Going a little bit more into the primary construction factors, we have deep foundations. We have done a geotechnical study of the area, and Ferndale is built on a swamp, and so most of our soil composition at all three locations is sandy. So sandy, upon further study, it took about 130 feet. So sandy, upon further study, it took about 130 feet to get down to bedrock, which is where you want to be putting your foundation, right? Because public safety is the number one goal, obviously, in everything that we do. So no matter where we build, it's going to involve deep foundations, which does involve a cost. We don't-
At any of the lots?
At any of the lots, no matter the location, wherever we build, it's just the state of our soil.
That's where the bedrock is, okay.
In our conversation with Royal Oak's Economic Development Director, they have the same issue on some of their lots, they have a lot of sand, so. The mixed use public, the green alley for residential neighbors, that's going to be a little bit of time, so that's just something I wanted to acknowledge too, because that's something unique, that's a gift to the residents and the community. We wanted to make this a, a space for the community to gather, knowing that that's important. And the mixed use street level retail, those are three factors that do play a role. And you'll notice in, in number three, I also accounted for the transfer slab for the future office, because that's, that's in the calculus too. So again, in summary, this is, this whole process is expected to be 12 to 15 months. And on the left, you'll see just a snapshot image, nothing detailed, that just shows you the footprint of where it could be. You don't see obviously leveled, you don't see leveled images there, so I want to be clear, there's, there's parking above that, it's just not 3D.
But Joe, just to be clear, so I guess if I'm hearing you right, what you're trying to say is, so we've got this deep foundation issue, so that means it's X amount of time to do it. And then these other two components add time to the construction duration. Is that what you're saying?
They're included in the 12 to 15 month calculus. So if you were to, if you were to just build a deck, kind of-
This altogether equals 12 to 15 months?
Yes.
And then if you took off three, that equals something, you took off two-
And we have the architect-
Yeah.
-who will, who will go deeper into those questions. Let me know if you want that to be now, but we're going to, we have a little bit more to discuss, but yes. So why don't I get through the rest of this and I think we're coming close to that point?
Gotcha.
I want to pull him up and have him answer some questions. And this could be the time, actually. Dan, here you go. Dan Mooney, everybody. So this, I did put together, this is just a little bit of a difference, because this is our first big downtown development.
Yep.
And so I wanted to just provide a general orientation, what is this? We keep hearing about precast and cast-in-place, what is it? It's really two different approaches to construction. And I kind of go through on the left, I define at a high level what they are and the timeline impacts. So for this specific project, the timeline impacts are noted on this sheet. So if it was precast, the timeline, no matter what, again, because of our unique composition, the deep foundation requirement, it's going to be nine to 12 months for a precast. And so for the cast-in-place with the alley and everything else, it's 12 to 15 months. You look at cost impacts, precast tends to be cheaper upfront, because you're hardening the concrete off-site. Elements don't matter, because you're doing that in a factory. And then because it's all precast, that gets transferred, so you're not doing anything onsite. It's more expensive upfront for cast-in-place, because you are doing it onsite. However, the lifecycle costs are less. And what that means is precast requires more joints. So when you're in the deck, you're going to see just more frequency of points, intersection points, where beams are meeting for support. You don't need that as frequently in a cast-in-place deck. So you're looking at the costs in the long-term, it's, it's more expensive to support precast because there's more stuff. There's more joints and more sealant to support and so you would have to do that. So cast-in-place, it's, it's cheaper in the long run and it's less to support. It's considered more durable, because you're, you're doing the cast-in-place. And now I have just a, Dan Mooney, who can provide a little bit more of a industry perspective on, on the discussion.
Well, does council have any questions about the two precast or cast-in-place? I'm not sure if I cleared it up, but Dan's here to support my explanation if I fell flat.
I don't yet, so does anyone otherwise? No, we'll wait and see if there's questions from the, thanks, Dan.
Okay, sorry, Dan.
All that introduction, that was kind of a letdown, Joe.
I have a sense he'll be back up. So if the transfer slab would get built, Phase 2, this is what it could look like. You could look at up to two office, floors of office space and that's 45,000 square feet of office. Again, we heard the residents loudly and clearly and we respect that about the right for privacy, so that would include a terrace setback, which would prohibit anybody from looking outside over that deck and/or over the office space. So no matter what, there's going to be a setback there, out of respect for privacy.
I'm sorry, Joe, if I may.
Go ahead.
Just for clarification, you're talking about Phase 2. This is after the 12 to 15 month period, possibly several years down the line.
Yes.
Okay.
And then you could consider looking at residential units, so we did accommodate for a little bit of a buffer there to ease the traffic from going to a residential transition into a downtown transition. Right now, that there, there really is no soft transitioning into there. So we, we've provided a buffer in which you could consider building a small number of residential units to add into the housing. I want to clear up a concern that I've heard, and it's a valid concern, and I just want to make sure that I take the time to address it, and that's the city certainly does not intend to be a landlord. There's different ways that we could go about this and the ways that cities go about this. One, we would, the street level retail, the office space, the residential, we would look to condo those property spaces, which means separating them from the parking development itself. And then we could extend ground leases, extended leases to developers who would have interest in building that residential or building that office space. Or you could, you know, you could sell the air rights, for example. If you wanted to build the office, you could say, hey, developers, who's interested in building on top of this already completed parking deck? Is there any interest in adding that here? And then the developer would look to acquire through air rights. And those, there's, there's still other market mechanisms, but that's just a couple examples. The main point is the city doesn't intend to be a landlord. I want to be clear about that. At the same time, one of the benefits of phasing this and separate of the phasing is that the parking that we gain right now when the deck is built, that parking capacity is maintained throughout the construction of this Phase 2. So the top level would likely be impacted if you were to build the office, but the other three levels would be there. They would be in play and they would be, they would not be turned offline during construction. So looking at the design process, the PIN represents where we're at today. We envision, if, if design funding is approved, to move forward with a public design input meeting in late April. That, that specific date isn't to be determined, but you'll notice there are two dates that are determined. There, both the planning commission meetings, again, we hold ourselves to the same standards as the business community. So on May 17th, we would expect to have a, a PUD, a planned unit development meeting. That is where the planning commission would receive our site plan, review the site plan and give us comment. And that site plan that's presented to them there on that date would have the public input that we received during April. And then we would have envisioned a second planning commission meeting where we will come back with our response to whatever feedback that they gave us during the May meeting. And so that would be in June. We would propose to seek approval from the planning commission in June and if they don't approve it, then we come back in July. And so the cycle goes. So if you look at the bottom left corner of that slide, that kind of just resummarizes what's going on during that Phase 1. So they would be reviewing and the public will be giving comment on four levels of parking, on some possible friendly alley design concepts or possible green alley elements. And you're looking at the streetscape designs for West Troy. Is there an influence in community spacing and community places, green spaces out there? Is there interest in utilizing it as the temporary event space that it could be utilized for, for market space? What is, what is the interest? And then these are the things that will factor into the design concepts that we, that we bring forward. Some access, I want to point out, and I put that in green down there, so we don't miss that. Some access to the parking could be restored as early as the 11 to 12 month mark, and I'm talking about this Phase 1, the 12 to 15 months. So taking, removing parking access isn't necessarily tied to the duration of a construction project. So we could still be constructing at 14 months and could have restored some parking access at the 11th month mark. So that's an important point to make. They're not, they're not necessarily the same. So we understand that it's a priority to restore access as quickly as possible and our, we have made Carl Walker, our designer, aware of that as well. So I would imagine that that will be reflected in the design and in the construction timeline. The next is just really closing out, talking a little bit about the, the Business Construction Support Services. I'd like to invite Barry Hicks, the DDA director, up there to just talk a little bit about what he's been doing.
Hey. Thank you, Joe. Good evening, council members. Some of the things that we've been working on, I know Joe's gone over a lot here, so I'm going to try not to give you repeat information. First and foremost, the DDA board did support the parking committee's recommendation, as Joe pointed out in October, which included such things as need a parking solution sooner rather than later. The Troy Street Lot was selected and needs to accommodate current and future development needs, so they're trying to be giving a little forethought to the things that may happen in the area. So far, the DDA, through the Business Development Committee, has reached out with some of our volunteers, as well as myself and some other office staff, to about 20 to 25 businesses in the area. We have a total of 60 we'd like to get to by midsummer. And the things that have come up, just to go over a few points, were the mixed use and trying to get a little bit better understanding of what that means. The cost estimates, which I think Joe's now gone over here tonight, and the time and length of construction, which has also been cleared up a little bit more tonight as well. Some of the other things we talked about were mitigation strategies with those businesses. By far, so far, I'm hearing valet services are the preferred method. There's an understanding where maybe shuttles might be appropriate for like employees and those types of things. Other ideas that came up included ride sharing and then the DDA providing some additional resources to those businesses with helping some of the employees understand, you know, where, where to park and how to park and those types of things. So that leads into the last thing, which is going to be the DDA's role in all of this. As you know, there's not just this one project happening downtown right now. There are a total of five relatively major projects, which is some growth, I think Ferndale hasn't seen happen at the same time in a long time, if ever, as far as I'm aware. Downtown, you have a lot of residential units coming online, you have a parking structure coming online. We're working on a communication plan, because we're hearing some feedback from businesses and residents, that there's a little bit of confusion about some of that. So the DDA has been working on a communication plan that will be rolled out probably by the end of May, which is going to include information on the ongoing projects and everything that are happening right now. We're going to do a few updates to our website, I think, that are going to provide some more information and then some other stuff that's coming down the pipeline. But generally, that's kind of where the DDA stands right now.
I wanted to point out an error in my slide. That's supposed to be $200,000, not $200.
Wow.
That's a big whoops. But yeah, so the DDA and the city, we've both been going through a budget season and so we both have settled on a figure where we will try to support funding for these programs like valet and other programs and spend up to $200,000 to do so. That's our commitment to supporting the businesses during construction. And so with that, that does get us to the question time.
Oh.
And there's our contact information. You'll notice the website, I want to point out, we have a project email address and a project phone number. And you can sign up for alerts at that website. You just select Parking Deck on the Alerts page and you will get text or email, whatever you choose.
All right. So let me just modify a little bit what I said earlier. I want, I want to get to the public and I want to get to you at this point in the meeting rather than later, but I do want to give council an opportunity, just if you have questions of, because I know I couldn't help but, but in there. If you have questions of clarification that, that you would like to ask, Joe, at this time, before we get to the public component, just to sort of help put this in context before we get to the public. Dan?
Sure, I have a number of them. Can you talk a little more about who was on the downtown parking committee?
Yeah, we had Brian Siegel, the owner of the Local Kitchen.
Well, let me just start by saying, that was a committee that was put together by the chair of the DDA and myself to, to sort of do a, since we're the two entities that are going to be sort of managing this project. And so Dean Bach, who I think I saw arrive, and I sort of co-chaired that and picked a number of downtown business owners and property owners primarily, just to give us feedback. And so if you want the individual members-
I don't need the names, I just want to talk about the makeup.
That was sort of where that came from. And, and let me just say, the impetus from that was, you know, we got a lot of feedback during 360. We heard residents loud and clear that there were things they liked and a lot of things they didn't. And so our intent was, let's start this, let's start over by listening as much as possible, to as many people as possible. That's why there were so many focus groups in there. But one of the groups we wanted to hear from were downtown business owners and property owners. So it was just a way for us to get feedback from them, one of the many ways we tried to engage people.
Great. Joe, can you speak a little more about why a mixed use solution in Phase 1 is better than a straight parking deck?
Yeah, well, I can say specifically to some businesses that have commented, I know I heard some businesses talk about it at the DDA strategy meeting I attended in January, is we need some daytime foot traffic. If we want to expand retail opportunities, we need people to be walking the streets, be walking by shops. So right now, we don't have an office presence significant enough to have the consistent daytime foot traffic and an office would do that. So when you talk about mixed use, you're, you're, you're building that opportunity to support both current businesses by introducing a new customer population. And then you're also bringing in a new kind of business that you don't currently have. So it's just diversifying the local economy.
Okay, thanks. So if I understood you correctly, and I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear about it, that even if we didn't do retail on the first floor to achieve the goals of the parking deck, we'd still be looking at four floors, the retail or the mixed use is not adding a layer of the parking deck?
That was included in the calculus, correct.
Okay, so there's parking on the first, you'd be the parking on the first section too?
There is still parking included on the first, yeah.
And to finance the project, we're, again, we're talking about using funds from the auto parking fund, correct?
That is correct.
We're not pulling money from the general fund to finance the bond?
No, we are not.
Okay, and to clarify what Councilman Polika said, Phase 2 with the discussion of additional layers or whatever, that's not a decision we're making tonight or right now. It's more about foundational use for future councils to decide how they want to use that.
Correct. It's, it's putting yourself in the, in the place where you have an opportunity to have that decision.
All right, thank you.
All right. Other questions or clarification before we open it up? All right. I would just add, you know, three years ago, Joe did not know all that much about parking decks.
Yeah.
And whether you agree with him or not, I think you understand, he's become quite an expert in it and I applaud you, because it wasn't his training, it's nobody's training unless you work for a company that builds parking decks. So I appreciate all the work that you have done in particular to lead this project. And Joe doesn't feel that well tonight and he did a great job presenting in the face of adverse health conditions. So thank you, Joe.
And his wife is nine months pregnant.
And his wife is nine months pregnant.
Full term as of last week.
All right. So with that, I would like to open it up now, because I'm going to guess that a lot of you, most of you are probably here to have, have heard this presentation and maybe you want to address council this evening. We'll treat it like call to audience, so come on up, give us your name and your address, if you're comfortable doing that. And three minutes, and I want to keep it to three minutes, just because we, you know, we, we got a lot to get through, and come on up and welcome to City Council. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Richard Council, 562 East Woodland, 11-year Ferndale resident, also a member of the Ferndale Library Commission.
Excellent, yes.
So I agree with the tenets of this proposal. I, I, I like the fact that we're going to get some parking into the city and I believe on the west side is definitely the best way to go. So I totally agree with the initial assessments here. What I kind of disagree with, or I wish would have been looked at, is what we're looking at for Royal Oak and for Rochester are 550 spots at a cost of between 12 and 15 million. When you break down the cost per spot, you're talking about $25,000 per spot. What we're looking at here is basically making a commitment of $51,000 per spot. And even though this is basically going to be proposed through a revenue bond proposal, I would imagine, which basically takes it out of the general funds issue.
No, not general fund, that's what we want to be clear about.
No, it's not out of general funds.
Not out of tax dollars.
It's from a revenue bond supported by, the issue is, is you also have, have concerns with the viability of the DDA long-term if this program does not work and the parking lot is not sustainable, right? And what you're really talking about is a situation where we're getting into 190, 100 And what you're really talking about is a situation where we're getting into 190, 100, what is it, 50, 38 spots right now, 165 basically is what we're kind of looking at. Your utilization is possibly going to be 30% on the high side, unless these predictions are, kind of come true. Two things with these predictions. With what's going on with transit in the United States today, specifically from an autonomous vehicle's perspective, in 2019 and '20, we're looking at a situation where basically a third of the cars on the road, new vehicles coming on, will be in an autonomous capacity. The issue that you're really looking at is, is if that autonomous situation actually happens, is what is the sustainability of this deck? And when you look at this situation, do you really want to bankrupt the DDA, you know, in year five or six because this parking deck is not sustainable long-term? And why are we not looking at a public-private type situation for this development, where someone else actually can put up some of the revenue and some of the cost sharing for this development with the DDA? Because I'm not worried and concerned about the justification for this lot. We need it, but do we need to be spending $51,000 per spot versus 25 grand?
Thank you, thank you. Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Clinton Hubbell. I'm a lawyer. I don't represent any interests except my own. I'm just speaking for myself tonight. I wanted to bring up a couple of things because I appreciate the City Manager, our Assistant City Manager, being very careful at the outset of his presentation to make sure that he told everybody that we've got lots of notice provisions that are making sure that public engagement on this issue is very high, although I tend to caution against this a little bit, or I'd like to caution against this a little bit. I myself am a member of a business group here in Ferndale, that a large number of whom were not aware of many of these plans. And so as public engagement goes forward, maybe council could inform the business community in every single way it has resources to do, because I've got that complaint several times at this point. Second, if the city is interested in being a problem solver as opposed to a problem creator, I think that this desire for a higher-density development can't dilute the mission of solving the problem. In other words, make sure that this higher-density development is not creating more problems than it solves. One of the things that I heard the Assistant City Manager reference was the fact that businesses are interested in more walk-in-type folks in order to keep the retail core strong. This is not going to come from, you know, five to 15 retail stalls at Allen and Troy. It's not the kind of foot traffic that the local businesses are looking for. The biggest bottleneck to foot traffic in downtown Ferndale is available parking. It is not that there are not enough office workers in downtown Ferndale to patronize. Furthermore, people from Ferndale themselves and even close in communities like to come to downtown Ferndale and shop, and they have a hard time doing that with this parking bottleneck. I also like to caution again, the city against using a lot of data from places like Republic Parking. I mean, this is a business that stands to profit from this particular enterprise, and I would say to you that independence is probably key in getting your information. And thirdly, and finally, we're concerned about the cost of this development. There are lower-cost options, as the Assistant City Manager alluded to tonight, and also the cost of the bonds that are going to be issued are significant. We went ahead and ran the cost of $15 million in municipal bonds over five years and an amortization at 5%, resulting in these bonds costing Ferndale $1,984,000 over five years. Now, this isn't a small amount of money, and we don't want to get stuck into the long-term, short-term debt game, where we're going to be refinancing these bonds in short shrift, which are ultimately, let's not forget, guaranteed by the taxpayers of the city of Ferndale. Also, far be it for me to dispute Miller Canfield and their work, but there is something that needs to be put on the record here.
And you are at three minutes, so if you could just make this quick.
This is the last thing I have to say. The Exhibit A that's attached to the notice, Mr. Mayor, says the principal and interest on said bond shall be payable from the general funds of the city, lawfully available for such purposes, including property taxes levied within applicable constitutional statutory and charter rate limitations. People need assurances that their tax dollars are not going to be paying for these bonds, at least initially. These things, it needs to be paid for by the parking fund, and people are not knowing that, because the public notice says general funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, and so noted, yes. Good evening, Eric.
Good evening, Dave. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Dr. Eric Blumberg. I live at 915 Leroy. Been around for a while. I was asked to read a letter which has been signed by 45 Ferndale businesses, a large number of Ferndale residents, 45 Ferndale employees, and many Ferndale customers. And I believe this letter has been sent to you folks, but we're also reading this now. Dear Mayor and Ferndale City Council, more parking in downtown Ferndale is essential, especially on weekends and many evenings a week on the first block west of Woodward and Nine Mile Road. We support our mayor and city council to move quickly but thoughtfully to meet parking demands. We, the undersigned businesses, business owners, employees, residents, and customers, oppose the current plan for a multi-use development on Lot 6 located at the intersection of West Troy Street and Allen Street. Instead, we support actions which would result in the development of a simple parking deck in this location. Some important reasons are, one, the timeline for a multi-use development is estimated to be 1.5 to 2 years. Because it will include residential and office units, subcontractors will have to complete extensive site preparation, excavation, foundations, footing, roofing, mechanicals like heating and cooling units, plumbing, sewer connections, and drainage lines, electrical systems, as well as framing walls, drywalls, insulation, flooring, cabinets, painting, installing faucets, countertops, light fixtures, plugs, appliances, internet, security systems, and landscaping. The timeline for a simple parking deck is six months. Current businesses will suffer less financial impact during a six-month construction period than one lasting two years. Customers and residents will endure a lesser degree of disruption during a shorter timeline. We ask that you do not threaten the survival of the wonderful establishments and community which thrive in the West Nine Mile Corridor. Reason two, a simple parking deck of two or three stories would guarantee a true net gain in parking spaces for our community. The multi-use development would increase demand for parking spots for all the new office workers, customers, and residents, adding to the current parking deficiency. Three, a simple parking deck like the one in downtown Rochester would be shorter in stature than a multi-use development. The downtown character of our block would be preserved by an uncomplicated short structure tucked in behind the storefronts. We would be overshadowed by a taller multi-use development. We respectfully request that the plans for Ferndale's future solve our parking problem, refrain from creating additional demands for parking, not overshadow the historic character of our community, and not threaten current businesses. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric. Good evening.
My name is Martha Sumpliner. I own Library Bookstore on Nine Mile in Ferndale. I've had that for over 30 years. What I'm going to read is a list of the businesses following the letter that Eric just read, requesting only a simple parking deck. Nine Lives Tattoo, Asaji Bistro, and if I mispronounce a name, I apologize. Bangkok Cafe, Caporia Mandenga Detroit, China Ruby, Crane Optical, Detroit Lotus Sanga Driven, Dyson Salon, Ferndale Yoga Flip Salon, Get Your Game On, Great Clips Hair Salon, Imperial International Hair, Java Hut, Komodo Kitchen, The Host, The Hair Company, Library Books, Local Kitchen and Bar, Loose Cannon Flagship, Lou Sew's Fine, Loud Baby, Maurice of London, Maze Bangkok Express, Megan Mitchell Salon, Majishi Martial Arts, Mishigo, Mishigo, I'm sorry, Modern Natural Baby, Natural Food Patch, Nature's Playhouse, One-Eyed Betties, Organic Food and Vitamin Center, Painting with a Twist, Pops for Italian, Professional Guitars, Public House, Reed Salon, Rosie O'Grady's, Secreto Cigar Bar and Bistro, Smooth Vapes, Star of India, Sullivan Cleaners, Tempermill Studios, Tiger Crane Kung Fu, and Union Barber. And I'd like to add that in these 30 years, I've been involved with at least six projects that went down. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jay Spyro, and I'm a business owner on Nine Mile, Majishi Martial Arts, and a resident. The citizens of Ferndale deserve to vote on a $20 million bond for the mixed-use project. Most of them don't know about it. There has been inadequate outreach. December was a poor time for public engagement. People were reeling from the election, and then we had the holidays. The December 5th meeting was attended by 11 residents. The December 16th meeting had three businesses represented. The results of the online survey showed many respondents writing in length in the comments section, disagreeing with multi-use. No questions on the survey address this key issue. More businesses and citizens responded to the letter that was just read, objecting to mixed-use project than came to the community engagement phase. The project is risky. Looking at the parking development recommendation diagrams, there are, you know, eight to 12 spaces on Troy, and maybe a few townhouses on Allen, with three levels of dedicated parking above. I don't see where the city is going to get enough rent from these ground-level units, combined with the parking proceeds, to meet the $1 million-plus yearly bond payment expenses for the next 20 years. So with lacking proceeds from these mixed-use rentals, the city is laying the groundwork, as you've seen today, to build up two more levels for the additional office space to sell or rent, or sky, what do you call it, sky rights. I mean, that's really the plan. So the Troy is, what we're seeing on Troy Street is half of the 360. That's what we're really seeing. It's fulfilling the vision of density in the master plan that many of us feel like it will destroy the character of our little block on the downtown. There's plenty of places to build up, and it's already happening. Would you leave that place? So the public rejected the six-story building, but our officials now are just simply phasing it in, as you can see, using the PUD, and the parking is merely a selling point to reach the goal of higher density. The four floors that we're gaining may very well, the four floors that we're seeing now, and by the way, on the first floor, there's only 19 parking spaces. It's mostly, you know, the new Troy Street businesses. But we're going to end up losing when we go up two more floors, which is really the plan. The four floors is not really the plan, as we've seen tonight. And then, without enough revenue to pay the million-plus-year bond note, there could be property taxes, as stated, as the stated option, in Exhibit A of the bond request. Our taxes are what ensure the large bond request, and we deserve a voice in this decision. The citizens have until early April to put this issue on the ballot by petition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, hi. I'm Jordi Mackley-Burger. I live at 221 Vestor, and I like to say I'm part of the downtown, because that's why we bought there in '98. I lived downtown in apartment before that. It was awesome. And I have two little boys, well, not two little, 13, almost 13 and eight. So we love Ferndale, and we're all about Ferndale, and we love the vibe of Ferndale. We don't want to be Royal Oak or Rochester, really. I have serious concerns about the multi-use structure and on Troy Street. I'm in there all the time, four nights a week, actually, at Majishi, four nights a week with my son, and love it. And when I'm there, I'm going all around to grade papers and do stuff while he's at Martial Arts. We walk everywhere, unless it's too cold, like tonight, or too snowy. But I even find, I kept a circle, and it's crazy. People get angry. I get angry. And we need more parking. So my serious concerns involve the foot traffic. It was thrown out there. It's great to have foot traffic, but I don't see that a few offices are going to do that. I really worry about that. When I go to an office space, for example, the certified nurse midwife in Royal Oak, I just go there and leave. I don't take my family and then go out to eat after and walk around to the stores usually. It's not a destination. I go to Salon Ray right here, and once again, I'm alone. I go places, you know, go there and leave. So I don't think that the shops are going to bring, or the offices are going to bring people and the foot traffic that you want, really. We already have it. I think the gentleman with the letter, I know my neighbors and friends and school parents I'm friends with would sign it in a heartbeat, that it's 100% of what, I feel like I'm redundant. Thank you for saying all those things. And the other thing is, I just want to make sure that everybody's clear about it, because like I didn't really know and what was going on, and I talked to other people, they didn't know either. So I think there's going to be a lot more public at the next meeting, for sure, that don't want multi-use. And walkability, absolutely, for all ages. I read on the website, the variety of shops housing in office for all ages. Yes, absolutely, but I don't see that happening there. That's our, that's parking, we need parking there. There's going to be the one, it's Old Save-A-Lot. There's going to be something there. There's going to be something here between Paxton and Leland. There's going to be something on my street, probably right behind Como's, I don't know. I wish you'd turn to Vestor. I recommended it. Vestor, be closed from Woodward to Bermuda, and some sort of green space, event place, cool stuff that happens here all the time, anyway. That'd be great, but not downtown. That's, we just need parking, and our businesses need to have all the people that they can get to come in there and have the shortest amount of disruption ever. I think the bottom line is civic responsibility. It can't be about money. It's, you know, it's got to be doable, but it's not for profit. It's not, you know, we need more money from anything. We just need parking spaces, and it'll keep downtown happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Paul, and I've been a 22-year resident of 349 West Saratoga, which means that I would be facing the proposed four to five to six, and who knows how much higher the Lego building is going to get. My initial concern was that in terms of public engagement, I didn't actually find out about how this new project was being proposed until I got the letter from Eric, which I fully support. But in looking at the presentation about, I like pie charts, and I looked at the pie chart about the, and the results from the Republic survey, or the predictions on the graph that show that the expected use with the new multi-use building would be 37%, which was, which is approximately, I believe, 144 spaces, with the office space being another 30 or 40%. I'm not exactly sure, because I couldn't see it. But that's, the assumption is that during peak periods, that the office people will leave. And by the way, I work in an office, and I don't always leave in time for a peak period. So my concern is that the expectation is that there will not actually be a net gain in parking spaces during peak periods, because the 144 spots that are allotted will not actually necessarily be vacated by office employees during that time period. So that we've got a building that's growing from the four levels that are proposed to having a long-term plan of, let's go ahead and make sure that we put this onsite prepared concrete so that we can keep building it higher. And then, of course, that's what I'm going to be looking at when I look out my front door. So I'm not, I'm very concerned, I'd much, much, much prefer a simple parking deck that would actually address the current needs, instead of actually creating additional problems that we're going to predict, that we're going to pay for down the line.
Thank you.
Hi, Council.
Good evening.
I'm open to the idea of a simple deck.
Here's your name, just so you.
Oh, Mark.
Heinrich.
Thanks. I'm open to the idea of a simple deck. I'd like to Xerox everything. I'm very concerned about small businesses and their parking issues for the term that this construction will happen. I'm deeply concerned about cost. I'm a homeowner, I pay taxes. $20 million over the course of however many years just sounds insane, you know? I, I'm concerned about local businesses dealing with the hindered parking. I think no matter what, whatever's done, I'd love to hear that a multitude of companies are going to get bids on this and not just the guy who knows the guy. You know what I mean? I'm curious how money comes in and out of the parking fund. Of course, the parking fund didn't exist until people paid for parking unless money was moved in there from the general fund. And then, say, parking situations are paid off over time, does that funds then go back to the general fund? I'm curious about that.
So even though this isn't question and answer, there is a lot of talk and confusion around what the parking fund is and is and how does it get its revenue. I'm looking at Cheryl, would you be just sort of, could you just sort of explain where the revenues to the, Cheryl is our finance director, so she's smart about all things money and she keeps our books. Just maybe a brief explanation of where the revenues come and go and that sort of thing.
Hi. The funds from the parking fund are all from the parking revenue that's generated through the city. We keep it in a separate fund, it doesn't get commingled with the general fund. It didn't start from a seed of the general fund, it's all the funds that, all the money that comes in as a result of the parking revenue and all the expenditures for parking things, the employees, contractors, things like that, all come out of that fund. And then as we bring more money in, then we spend, then we get a fund balance, like having money in the bank and that's what's in there now.
And what are those funds? So it's literally the quarter you put in the meter?
Yes.
It's the ticket that you get, right? Ticket revenue, some?
Yeah, I think there's some ticket revenue there as well.
Is there anything else? I'm just, I just want to just.
Yeah, any, again, just any time that you pay, any form of payment goes into that fund as well as, we get some of the tickets because we have to adjust the time that court spends on the tickets as well.
And what's the current balance of that fund? I'm sorry, if, you weren't expecting that question?
I think Joe does, I think Joe knows.
But Joe knows because he knows all things parking.
Yes, he does.
Fund balance is about 3.25 million.
3.25 million, okay.
That's as of June 30th. And then annual revenues just surpassed $1 million last year.
All right. Okay, thank you. Just to kind of, yep, briefly talk about that.
So five years from now, if there's a surplus, does that go to the general fund?
A surplus? No, it cannot. By law, by whatever rules these finance people work under, those are separate, not part of the general fund. We don't take money out of it, we don't put money into it. The parking system needs to pay for the parking needs.
So I plan to live here for the next 20 years or whatever, 15 years. In 15 years, I wonder if, you know, if there is 5 million in that fund and we have sufficient parking lot.
We could lower the rates, for instance. I mean, if we had a huge surplus, we could lower the rates because we don't need as much revenue to run the fund, so it's a self-balancing.
Just to clarify too, this also manages all the maintenance of all of the parking lots, the, all of the resurfacing.
Resurfacing and.
The lines, striping.
Everything, none of that comes out of the general fund. Yeah. And the people, the Republic parking people who write the tickets, they get paid out of the fund as well, not out of the general fund. Just to be, yeah.
Okay. I just, I just like to think that sometime in the future, maybe everything would be paid off and things could help out the general cost.
I like that.
And I'd just like to finish by saying I think we should vote on this. I think the residents should vote.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's John, I'm a resident of Ferndale first and foremost and also business owner at Modern Natural Baby. I always like kind of being on your guys' side and then parking comes and then I have to take the other side. So I'm sorry about this, but one of the things that I have a problem with is in the, in the discussion, we're talking about like, what would a retail person do, right? And I'm a retail person, I have 5,400 square feet, I was never asked what a retail person would do. And I'll tell you what, I want to grow and I want to grow bigger and bigger every year. What's stopping me is parking. Now, having a mixed-use in that parking is not going to help me grow my business. What will is, and I'm on the other side, so I've been on the Troy Street and that's insane, but what's going to happen if you do that, it's going to hurt the Withington Lot as well. Now, what's hurting me is more of parking. If I ask my customers, what, why do you not like going Modern Natural Baby? She says, once I find a parking spot, it's fantastic, right? So I'm just saying, like, maybe, maybe it's my problem because I haven't been more open, but I found out through Sensei Jay that this parking project was going on and maybe that's my fault, but as one of the bigger retailers in the, in the city, I think our input and just kind of looking at it from a way of saying, is this, am I going to grow if you make some business office or am I not going to grow if you just add so many more parking spots? And if you add more parking spots, I want to get bigger. I mean, that's the only, that's my deterrent. That's what's stopping me from growing any bigger because I only have so many parking spaces. So just, that's my voice and thank you for letting me hear it. Thank you for hearing it. Thank you very much.
That's what we're here for. Thank you, sir. Good evening, George.
Good evening. My name is George Jith, I own S.I.G. I've been here 17 years. When I came to City of Ferndale, May 1999, at that time, I told the city manager, you do need a parking deck because time is changing. Even now, you guys, you design all that, you don't know the future where it's going. You don't need retail, nobody buying retail. Everybody push the button, you get from Amazon, you get everything you want, from your dress, from your underwear, from your glasses, from your shoes, whatever you want, you push the button. So retail is not. So if you want to school yourself, you should know the society. Society today is ruled by the cell phone, by texting. So the only place you have, your hair, your nail and the restaurant and the bars. The hair, cannot go to your home, cut your hair or color your hair. The nail is the same thing. So you need a place, let's go meet this place, let's go to have this guy because he have hamburger this location. So you go to this location. Let's go to this location because they have a beer. Let's go to this location because they have whatever they have. So and now, we've been experienced for the past year and a half, every day at 5 o'clock, our parking is no place to park. You overextend the capacity of every single one, you give too many little licenses. When the Rust Belt has event 200 people, where they want to park? That's 100 car. Where you want to park? You have the T, you add them everyone, you need almost behind our store, you need almost 400 parking lot for all the businesses you have. Every day I hear the people, 5 o'clock, oh, there's no place to park, it's only 5 o'clock, oh, you're busy. Oh, wow, yeah. And then I provide valet parking for our customer on the Friday and Saturday. I spend $600 a month and the city doesn't give me to offer for the parking meter. So that project is very bad. And if I'm the city manager and if I want to school and if have a presence on the street, which you lack, tons of that, you have no presence on the street. Hello, how are you? How you doing? What's going on? How the business? How can we help you? You have nothing at all, zero. Honestly, zero. You have nothing, no presence. I don't know even who DDA manager. Why I want to pay my taxes for a person I don't know? You have no presence. And if I want city, the city manager, I would never let Save-A-Lot go out of my hand. For $1 million, you could buy it, you could bought thousand parking spot, eliminate all the problem. You don't have to burden the residents in taxes, you don't have to burden anything, you have revenue coming to you every single day. As in the center of the city, they can walk any place they want. It's very bad. You have no presence from every single one responsible in this city. You get mad at me, fine. You love me, fine. You hate me, fine. I put my bread.
I'm not mad at you, George. By the way, I love your, I love the beret, sir.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
That the way it is.
Thank you for coming.
You have no presence on the street. You have to change your habit, you have to sell, forget the cell phone, you have to sell, forget the computer.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Mike Gaj, I'm at 476 West Troy. I don't see any residents really from West Troy, any corner house?
Four.
Oh, former, you don't count, Julia. We love her, but she doesn't count. No notification for this meeting at all.
Well, she counts.
I mean, handbills, letters sent out for this meeting that was going on tonight? Did anything go out in the mail for people on West Troy?
Nothing.
Nothing. Didn't even know there was a meeting. Got online, saw something, came up here. We do need a parking structure, not something elaborate like you have in mind because I was at a meeting, I think, back in October, which I never got notification that there are other meetings going on, okay? But I do see a problem that when you're developing a building where the former Save-A-Lot is, that you have to take 10 spots over to Foodland and the response was, three houses here. And they said, well, visitors come, they can park on the street or in the Withington Lot. Really? That's ridiculous. Okay? Out of 90 units that are single and 30 that are double, you don't think anybody's going to have company over there? Where are they going to park? You have a new construction next to Hungry Howie's that was a condemned house. Rather than buying a condemned house and rezoning it, you put a building. So now there's what, 12, 14, 16 spots in that lot? What about the day traffic that goes to the restaurants there? They're losing out. Who's creating the problem? There's a spot across the street. Are you going to grab it, let it go, do a construction? You're putting a building down here. You have four lanes in the picture that you showed online. I only see two congestion. What about the fire station? What happens if there's a fire? Then you're building something on Liver Noise. What, 12 to 16 unit apartment? How many spots does that have? One for each resident? You have people parking in the Ferndale Foods who work in the businesses. You had to put up signs in front of the coffee shop so they would have spots for customers that come in. Seems like you guys are sort of creating a problem here. Not just people coming into Ferndale, but the council itself and the way they're zoning and allowing things to be built. How many parking structures, how many parking spots you're going to have for the new residents down here in that building? Can you guys answer that? You're putting a new construction down here, homes, apartments, condos?
Which one are you talking about? The Ferndale House, the former Save-A-Lot?
No, over here, pointing over here.
I think you mean this way.
This way, okay, this way.
143 High Como?
No, not the one, isn't there one supposed to be down here on Nine Mile and Hilton?
143 High Como?
Yeah, how many spots?
On East Nine, on East Nine Mile?
Yeah.
Sorry, is that the one you're talking about?
Okay, Nine Mile, yeah.
I would defer.
Sort of disorientated.
Jordan, maybe, how many spots are?
How many apartments?
There's 127 apartments.
Okay, 127, how many parking spots?
Sir, would you let him answer, please? Thank you.
On site, so they're, all the parking's onsite, in fact, they're adding 15 on-street parking spaces. They're covering their own needs onsite and they're adding parking capacity.
So you don't think people are going to be married, have a significant other and need extra spots to park?
That's why they're going to have more spaces than units.
On the streets, yeah.
They would know, they're going to have 130, it was 132 spaces onsite, which is more than the units that they'll have.
127, you said, correct?
Plus the, plus the 15 on-street.
I'm kind of bad at math here. Is that just, that's what I'm saying, doesn't make sense. Okay, but that's what I'm saying. And you're going to have to have another parking structure and something else.
All right. And you are at your three minutes, if you want to just.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ian Sandler Bowen and I've been a resident of Ferndale for my entire life.
Awesome.
And I've just got a little, something I've noticed in the payment for this proposed parking, multi-use parking and the Forest, the Forest Row one. So it's getting, you said it's getting paid for from the parking fund, correct?
Correct.
So the annual, the annual revenue of the parking fund is around $1 million, correct?
Or now?
Yes. So currently, the way I see it is you get a bond of $20 million and is paid off over 20 years, which averages around $1 million a year. So that's, as it seems, is the entire revenue of the parking fund. How are you going to pay for all the other things that the parking fund pays for currently? So the meter maids, or not maids, but the meter, the people who check the meter, the tickets and any other things covered by that currently? Do you have an answer?
We've got a pro forma, yes.
Okay.
You have a bond given in fruition over 15 years, about $1.1 million. You have new revenues that are coming up from the deck, to pay for the deck itself. And again, the 25 actually, the deck revenue, that ends up paying for itself.
Okay.
So there is a pro forma that has been done that we can share, I don't think we have that tonight, but that just talks about future revenues versus future bond payments.
And then for the different uses of this and the new developments, the way, the number of spots that appear currently, it seems like there is minimal overage and then with growth or there's just a minimal amount over the amount that there is and with the growth of these businesses drawing in new customers from, and growing, will there be need for further parking structures and further development like this if we do add these new businesses?
I'm not sure I can answer that question now, but.
Because you're adding new businesses, which will undoubtedly grow to a certain extent and I don't remember the exact number, but you've got maybe 50 extra spots from what they, when they start off. What happens when those businesses grow? You'll need more spots there.
If I could, just a point of clarification, that he's referencing the, at the peak hour capacity, after, it's assuming there's mixed-use in place, would be 337, capacity is 390. The difference is the demand is spread out, so the office demand is part of that is leaving during the day typically, not all, as been pointed out, it's correct, but one would assume the majority of the office wouldn't stay. And when they vacate, that capacity ends up becoming available. But either way, the 45,000 square foot of office that's on that plate supports what it supports. So office is different, it doesn't really grow with customer base, the business employees are the primary capacity generator. So when the business employees leave, that's when the capacity freezes. I hope that helps. Better answer.
All right. Thank you, Ian. Appreciate it. Thanks. Good evening, Matt.
Hello, Matt Helms, live on East Webster, 20-year resident of Ferndale, longtime homeowner. Ferndale has, as we all know, just like every other city in the state, revenue problems, you know, in the wake of the recession, the only way for Ferndale to build out of that problem is up and out. We don't have, you know, we don't have room to grow, we need density. That's the only way we're going to do it. And I see this ramp as, as a model way for doing that. We're bringing in, you know, context-sensitive design, it's not just a dead space for cars only. You've got first-floor retail that adds to the vibrancy of downtown street life, which is one of the reasons I moved here in the first place. You know, so I just, I'm speaking as somebody who doesn't normally come to city council meetings, I prefer to, you know, vote and let you guys handle your business. There are a lot of other people in the city who are much like that too and we would like to see this ramp built. They have been talking about one for so many years and I would hate that the concerns of downtown business owners would again override the, you know, the future of, something badly needed here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Michelle Lewis, the owner of Painting with a Twist and I've been in Ferndale for seven years now. Just moved to a larger space, what, almost four years ago. I was very hesitant to do it because of the parking situation, but we did do it and we doubled in size. So I am part of the Ferndale parking problem, but I would love to be part of the solution. But I will say, I think we are part of the wonderful, or have really seized. And we doubled in size. So I am part of the Ferndale parking problem, but I would love to be part of the solution. But I will say, I think we are part of the wonderful, or have really seized the Ferndale vibe. Our customers love coming to Ferndale. They come from all over. All over the Detroit metro area, even from Canada. But I have a few questions. Because it's not a question and answer, I guess I'll have to answer my question. But just to be really clear.
Well, for questions of clarification, if we have specific answers we can give you, we're happy to do that.
So the parking structure. I just recently became aware of the parking, the development, probably about three weeks ago. Maybe it's on me. Maybe I've been too busy in the business to find out about all the announcements. But when I found out, I said, "Oh, my God, how tall is this structure? Where's it going? How tall is it?" It's four floors. And that's about, what, 70 feet high?
What is it, George?
One area has been 45 to 50.
45 to 50 feet?
We haven't done any...
For the four floors?
Yeah, we haven't done any design.
Okay. We haven't designed it yet, but approximately.
So in my mind, how is that affecting the neighborhood? It's towering over the neighborhood behind it. Yes, I'm hearing that it's gonna be terraces and you'll be stepping back. But you're still gonna have that view and you're towering over the neighborhood. So even though I don't live in the neighborhood, I feel for the neighbors that are directly behind that. Also, the length of construction. I'm hearing it could be nine months, 12 months, 15, 12 to 15, or maybe two years. That's a big concern, because now I'm thinking of the 360 project that was the Willington parking structure. So as a business owner, what does that do to me? Even though the parking structure is on this side, it's gonna push all the folks that are looking for parking over on the other side. What do we do? What do we do for nine months to two years? You're gonna get a lot of people that's gonna flee, a lot of businesses that's gonna go, that's gonna have to shut down. What were the solutions for the 360 project? And the solutions that you gave for the parking while the construction was happening was valet shuttle. That's the same thing that the 360 project offered. And it got shut down. Just, I'm, you guys heard, I'm on the list. Think about a one- or two-story parking structure that will lessen the duration, hopefully to six months. That would be more palatable to...
To be clear and fair, we can't build a deck in six months. At least, that's what the engineers tell us. And it won't take two years. I just want to be clear so that we're all using the same timeframes. Joe, would you repeat? A pre-cast deck takes what? And a phase one with no office takes what? Just so we're on the same page.
A pre-cast is expected to take nine to 12 for this building. And the phase-one deck, which would have the retail, the alley improvement, and the streetscape public space, is 12 to 15 months. Certainly not two years.
So just so we're all talking about the same timeframe. I mean, we can debate whether that's acceptable or not.
The challenge with the six months, again, I want to...
No six months.
Emphasize that is our soil doesn't allow for that. We must have deep foundations.
So it doesn't depend on the height or how large it is? It's basically because of the soil conditions is making it at least nine months?
Well, height, I mean, those are factors. But limiting it to six months, it takes significant time to just do the excavation. We have to go down at least 130 feet. And then you have to have certain kinds of footing and foundations. But we, again, once public comment's over, we do have the architect who can answer some tactical questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Gar Boyajin. I'm a resident in Ferndale.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you. I'm actually in the steering committee, so regarding making the building, how we want to make it. But I have a more, a different kind of concern. Specifically, it's traffic. I had this concern at the last meeting, too. I was concerned that, were you guys doing traffic studies? I did see those rubber hoses on the streets for about a week.
Right.
And I don't know what data that gives you. But the thing that keeps running in my head is like the nightmare of the dream cruise. So is anyone looking at like the cars moving around? How they're gonna get to the parking structure? Is there gonna be gridlock? Is it gonna back up to Nine Mile? Is it gonna back up to Woodward? So is like, you know...
And Joe, do you want to just talk to, because we didn't talk about traffic in this presentation, but it's been part of the investigation, Joe, just briefly talk about?
Gar, good to see you. The traffic study actually is initiated, we have a kickoff meeting tomorrow. So we have, what we covered is just a baseline level of data, but we wanted more information. And so we are working with a firm through Carl Walker called Opus. And they have experience doing just that. They've done work in Royal Oak and Rochester and Livonia and all over the state and nation, actually. But, so the point being is the traffic study is a priority, and we actually are initiating that next week. They think that they should have some reports for us to be able to present in April.
Thank you.
That was my concern and the feasibility that, you know, is this entire project possible because the roads can't support it.
Right. Great question, and thanks for coming. Phew, all right. And I thought you were all here to wish me a happy birthday this week. Is there anyone else that would like to address council about this now, knowing that there's going to be lots of other opportunities, obviously, to engage us? But yes, ma'am, thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea. And I have, we have properties on Breckenridge and West Marshall.
Excellent.
And I have, we have lived here for 17 years, almost. And I'm a big fan of density downtown, that whole thing. But I have really heard my favorite business owners. And so I'm here to support the more simple parking structure. And I also want to, as a parent of young children, the shuttle is, my two favorite stores there, Natural Food Patch and Majishi Martial Arts. Wiping out the street-level parking is a huge issue for families, parents with small kids. I am not gonna put my kids on a shuttle from Credit Union One. I will say, I'm also a huge fan of walking. And I think that all Ferndale residents should be walking and riding their bikes more. So we need more, we need more bike locks everywhere, right? But that doesn't always happen. And so a shuttle coming over with two kids to get groceries or after school to get to karate on time, that's, I don't think that's a good short-term plan. So that's, that's my two cents. And I wish everybody really good luck, because we need more parking. So we need to figure this out.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So I don't see anyone else in line to address council on this this evening. But I do want to give council another opportunity. If there's any comments or questions that you want to close this presentation with this evening or orders going forward for Joe and the group that you want them to carry forward, this would be a good opportunity to do that.
I would just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts and concerns. As an elected official, it is my responsibility to ensure that the assets and resources of the city of Ferndale are used most effectively and efficiently to obtain the best return on investment for the businesses and residents today and those in the future. I'm happy that we've come to the point where no one is arguing that we do not need a parking structure. I think that alone has taken us 15 years. Now we have to decide if we want to build a parking deck alone or add three more months to a project and build a multifunctional structure that will serve the community for many years to come and create a new source of tax revenue to support city services.
Anyone else?
A question and a comment.
Tell us your heart.
My comment is, I'd like to second, I mean, I know this is a frustrating process for everybody, and I really do value everybody coming out. But since the time I've been on council, this is so hotly debated. And the fact that we're all here together mutually recognizing the parking problem, maybe not in alignment on the solution, is heartening to me and shows progress. So I really do appreciate that. My question for Joe is, can you clarify for me more? Because it gets muddied. The steering committee's decision for a mixed use versus a simple parking deck, quote unquote?
Or standalone.
Or the standalone parking deck. What were the pros and cons to that decision-making process?
I think one of the pros is, you know, the plan alignment in terms of aligning itself with the city plans. But I think also, I really want to get back to diversifying our parking population. Again, I think the pro was adding that space to retail and adding that office footprint provides a different type of traffic that could support a diversity of different businesses. And I think we know that adding the parking deck, the peak hour doesn't change, the calculus net doesn't change. You're still gonna have late-night traffic. And that's, the fear was that the daytime traffic is gonna be empty. So there's a perception challenge of building the deck and having it utilized just for the evening hours. And I know that was part of the discussion points.
And I've heard restaurant owners commenting the lack of lunch traffic, foot traffic as well. So it seems like that would feed into it as well?
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's where we were talking about, the office space. So the 45,000 square foot, I can tell you in our original pro forma, that we're estimating about 101 office employees to be able to house themselves in that footprint. So that's 101 people who could eat lunch during the day, who could go shopping during the day, and who could potentially grocery shop during the day.
And I think, I know it's a work in progress. But I'd like to say with whatever solution we decide to build, I'm not happy with where the mitigation plan is. And I know, again, it's a work in progress that the DDA and the city need to work on. But just shuttles and valets aren't gonna do it. And I'm looking for more, so.
That's understood.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a, oh, I have a couple of thoughts. And I just wanted to kind of start high-level acknowledgement and then sort of drill down into a couple of thoughts I've heard today from the residents here. And I kind of wanted to start with the phrase, someone said, "Move quickly and thoughtfully." And I can say, we have not moved quickly. But we certainly have moved thoughtfully and really sort of tackling the challenges facing our downtown. And no doubt about it, our downtown is changing. Our community is changing. It's growing. And I say it's growing from the real estate perspective in that we're seeing residential homes go for sale and we're seeing commercial property, private property, go for sale since the crash of, the financial crash, really, when property sales just stopped entirely. And there was no investment in our downtown, other than repurposing our existing building space. And that definitely is changing. We have private property owners selling to private property owners who like the save-a-lot. And so I recognize that this change is really, can be really unnerving. And I guess that's why I go back to the thoughtfulness and how thoughtful that we're trying to be in making sure that we're getting it right in design, in the process of engagement and outreach. And so while the downtown is changing, it is causing a lot of other challenges for us to face as a community. So we know that we don't have a lot of Ferndaleans who actually work in Ferndale. Through our master plan update, we had 9% of our residents in Ferndale actually work in Ferndale. We know that we have a demand for office space. Every day, our city staff get calls about office space in our downtown and our community, and we can't fulfill it. And what does this mean? If you can't fulfill office fees, it means we're not creating jobs in Ferndale. And so we are missing this opportunity to do job creation in our own community. And then the other change that's happening that we're seeing is that we're seeing a people, a change in how people want to live and how people want to get around. We're seeing that people want to live in different types of housing. They want more housing choices. We have heard from our seniors here that they want to live in our community but not live in a single-family home. We have learned that our baby boomers and our millennials or our young professionals, they don't want to have two cars anymore. And the reason they don't want to have two cars is multifaceted. But they may have a school payment, a mortgage payment, and other issues where they need to scale back. And so all these things are happening and impacting our community, the people who live here, the people who play here, the people who eat and dine here. And so I go back to being thoughtful. How are we solving and tackling all these different challenges facing our community? They're also challenges, but they're also opportunities. And so I go back to, we need to acknowledge that people's preference for driving is changing. Someone mentioned it here, that autonomous vehicles are coming. And the state, we are the premier state of making this happen in our community. And while all those things have an oner place right now, it's the reason why Ford doesn't call itself an automobile company anymore. It calls it a mobility company. They're changing. And so we're seeing car use change. And we see that people want to walk, they want to bike, they want to car-share, they want to use Zipcar, they want to use Uber and Lyft, they want to take transit. So there's all these different things that people want to do to live their lives differently. And what I value about Ferndale, and what I've heard people value about Ferndale, is that we're here in Ferndale to be who we are. And we be who we are because we have choices. And so if you build a city for cars, you get cars. And if you build a city for people, you get people. And people is what makes Ferndale. And that's what I value. That's what I've heard what people value in Ferndale. That's what I've heard businesses tell me that they value in our community. Now, going back to thoughtful, does that mean that we don't solve our parking problem? No. It means we need to add more parking. And we have thoughtfully analyzed all the data, the parking usage, which spots are the most popular, popular numbers in Ferndale. We can tell you our highest-use spots in Ferndale. And I think we go back to, how do we solve this parking challenge in the face of all this change, of people changing how they get around and how they want to live? And so for me, this parking deck is about an investment in our downtown. It is an investment in our businesses. It is an investment in our people. And sure, it's to house cars. If that's the only thing we invest in, is cars, then we are missing an opportunity to invest in people who belong in our downtown, whether they're working, visiting, eating, playing, biking, walking, car-sharing. Then we are missing that opportunity to meet the values of our community that I ran on to represent our community. And so going back to thoughtful, of all the things that I've heard tonight, the cost is really concerning to me. When you hear about, what is the cost per parking space of the investment we're making per parking space? It is high. And so why I go back to liking and supporting and open to the mixed-use concept is that parking decks are essentially a dead weight for tax production. That parking deck as a standalone deck produces no taxes to reinvest in our downtown. Nothing. Dead weight. So when you add other uses on it, it produces tax revenue. And so not only do I look at the upfront investment and how we're going to pay for it long-term, I look on long-term value and return on investment for our community. And that is not just from a taxpayer revenue or a tax revenue generation through other types of uses of office or residential. But how are we going to make sure that a standalone deck doesn't solve one problem? Because we have more than one problem and more than one challenge and tons of opportunities to capitalize on. So we have some choices to make as a community. Whether it's in the West Troy lot of a standalone deck or in Willington, because I've heard the same issues of building it on any parcel that the city owns are all the same issues we're gonna have to face as a community. Of, construction is hard. It's hard to get through. It's hard to communicate about. We learned it on West Nine Mile when we put in the bike lanes and we did the streetscape design. We learned it on Hilton. So we, going back to thoughtful, we have been very thoughtful in how to make sure people are aware and involved. Did we always get it right? No. Are we always improving on it? Yes. Do we need to do a knockout job in partnership with the DDA to make sure that the business owners and the residents know what's happening on that parcel with development? Yes. And while a lot of these toolbox ideas in the downtown shuttle program and the downtown valet... valet, there are other things we can be doing. And the reason I know about those other things in my job, you all know, an urban planner, I did outreach to small businesses that were impacted by construction for M1 Rail down in the downtown Detroit. So I've heard from businesses owners, a lot of your concerns about surviving construction in another environment. And so I'm pretty aware and acutely aware of what makes a business owner stay up at night, what keeps you awake when it comes to construction. And so going back to thoughtful, I go back to making sure that we have a very thoughtful process toolbox in place with the DDA to support businesses through the construction process. Because Woodward will have to be constructed again one day, this is, you know, this is, streets have to be reconstructed. But I think this is where we need to come together. And that's what I know about Ferndale, is coming together and solving these problems together. Or if you want to be optimistic, taking advantage of the opportunity. So at the end of the day, we need to look at the multiple rewards of this investment in our downtown. And there are many. If we make sure that we have multiple awards come out of the multiple investments we're going to make, because we're making investments not only for cars to park there, for people to get out of their cars and walk to businesses, we're making an investment in pedestrians because every car driver is a pedestrian, they become one, they hit the street, they hit the sidewalks and they walk. We need to make sure that we are expanding on our office opportunities in the downtown because people want to work here, they want to live and work here, and we need to give them that choice. And to wrap up my brief comment, I really go back to our values as a community and the values I have learned over the years of the DDA, that this is about a vision of our downtown, it's about fulfilling a vision for who we are as a community. And we need to activate our street, not only for people, or not only for cars but for people. And, you know, we're just starting this design process, I don't know what it looks like, that's the feedback we're going to get from all of you. But, you know, at the end of the day, we can hold up an image of a standalone deck versus this maybe awesome, pretty awesome development that could have, meet the design standards this community wants to maintain its community character. Don't we have to give ourselves that opportunity to see what it is? That's kind of where I'm, where I'm at. So those are my thoughts about this investment. I'm all in, I am all in to solve and survive and manage through the construction period. I'm all in with the business owners, I'm all in with council and staff and the DDA. And the DDA is our strongest partner in this. They know your businesses the best, the business owners represent the DDA. So this is your DDA. And you can make it what you want it to be to help us through this issue and challenge and opportunity in our downtown. Now I need some water.
All right.
And I also thought everybody came out for my birthday too. It's tomorrow.
Oh, that's right. Hang on, we're going to do council and then, yes. So just the, my goodness, after all that, just.
Sorry, I really, I'm going to go get some water.
So, again, kind of echoing what others have said, we all agree that we need a parking. I've heard it for many years and it looks like we're all on that same page at least. Looks like a lot more discussions need to be made as far as the implementation, the design. I think I heard someone in the audience say that this was risky. Well, when I hear that term, when I hear that word risk, I think of this community because Ferndale is known for taking risks. We have things here that other communities don't have. And when I hear about us trying to be like another community, that's, that's totally wrong because communities want to be like us. So I don't want to even hear that anymore. I think that, I'm really pleased that, one, that you're all out here, this is a civic engagement kind of in its true form. And also, I'm pleased that these discussions are going to continue and that you'll all have an opportunity to be involved in the process. That's always been very important to me, that's something I'm just passionate about. I think the community should always have a voice. Two, the gentleman, I don't know you, if I've never met you, I think the owner of Asaji Bistro, your comment regarding our presence in the community, I promise you that we are in the community a lot, but since you said that, I'm coming to see you.
She's, that's what she said, I'm coming.
Okay, okay.
Good food.
Thank you for your comments. So I just hope that there's a lot of concern regarding this, I just want your business to know that we are in support of you and that, I'm sure like Mayor Protem Piana stated, we're going to be very thoughtful in the process, but parking is needed, so we just need to come to a solution as to how we're going to get it, because we have to get it. That's my comments.
So I will be brief, a couple of things. If there was, if there's one thing that I'm overwhelmingly disappointed about is the number of people, not just tonight, but over the last week or two, that have said, I didn't know you guys were having these community engagements, I didn't know you are having these meetings. That's a disconnect, and I know a lot of you have sheepishly said, maybe it's my fault I'm running a business, it's not your fault for running a business, you have a lot on your plate. It, it, it's incumbent on us to make sure that we connect with you. And we'll tell you, when we hired the firm a year ago to begin this process, one of the things they heard loud and clear from us is your team better have a communications, community engagement component in it that is robust. We want as much feedback as possible. One of the things I've learned tonight and over the last week is we didn't get enough, right? We meant it when we said we wanted to hear from you, we still do. So I very much appreciate, even though when we did the downtown business owner one, we only got three business owners that came, and that was disappointing to me, you've come tonight, so it's okay, it's not too late, that's what I want to say, because we still want to hear from you. John from Modern Natural Baby, I think he might have left now, he's probably got kids to attend to, but he said something that also bothered me, and that is he said, you know, I usually come and support you guys, tonight I'm not on your side. I want you to know, this isn't our side versus your side, we're trying to, I'm trying to get everybody on the same side. It's why Dean Bach and I, Dean from the DDA convened a committee so that we could do this jointly, we wanted a project that we could all be on the same page with. I'm hearing tonight that we're not all on the same page, and I get that. So again, hear you loud and clear, but our intent is to get to a place where the majority of us can say, yep, this is going to be an issue, we're going to have to struggle through this, but most of us agree that this is the direction that we're headed. Because this isn't about taking sides, and Dean and I have used the phrase, we want to be arm in arm, we want the DDA, and by DDA, to me, that means the downtown business owners and the city and the residents to be on as much of the same page as we can possibly be, we're not trying to do this in an adversarial way. I've also heard a lot of statistics, and these are some, this was, this was the first night I've heard some of the statistics about the single use, we're not calling them prefab, we're calling them precast decks that were, that are being built in Royal Oak, were built in Rochester Hills, and some of the detail around that. I would still like to flesh that out. So I guess my commitment to the folks that have come and to the community is this, as we begin to ask the architect to start drawing pictures so that we could at least see what we're looking at, that should include single use, precast uses as well. So not just mixed use, even though that was the recommendation of the, of the parking committee and where we've been headed to in this, up to now, that that should also explore the options of precast, single use. So that when we do come back to you in April, right Joe, April and May, right, with some pictures, because pictures tell a thousand words, and it's easy to, it's more difficult to just talk about numbers and that sort of thing, that we will also have what that looks like, how long it will take and how much it will cost. And that will be part of, and I'm, I guess I'm looking to my council to see if you guys are nodding, because I don't know if that means the architects have to spend a few more hours and a few more bucks, but to me, it's worth it, to come back in a month or two in the next phase with those options as well. And then we'll have a better sense, I think, of saying, is that what we want? Is that the project at the price point at a, at a construction duration timeline that we're willing to absorb? So I'm committed to including that in the next phase and fully exploring what that looks like side by side with a, with a, with a multi-use or mixed use component as well. So if council is agreeable to that. I guess that's my, my commitment. And to continue the community engagement, I know Joe that this would have technically been the end of phase one community engagement, but I think, given the fact that there were a lot of folks that just didn't know how to plug into the community engagement for the past year, and I'm not blaming anybody for that, I'll, we'll take the blame for that, I want to continue that, and we'll engage Blue Waters, is that the name of the firm that helps us do this? Huh? Bridgeport. Whatever that looks like, whether it's Cara or however we do that, we will continue the, we will continue phase one of community engagement and continue to get this input to you, get your information back to you, because we, because that has been critical all along, it's been our intent to do that all along, and I apologize if people are just finding out about this project, that's not acceptable, and I'm not sure where we fell down on that, but it is our intent to get as much of this as possible. So, and you have been dying to say something, so come on up, we'll give you the last word.
I don't want the last word because I don't want to stay here all night.
I hear you.
My name is Sue.
Hi Sue.
My, my real question is, because the bond was published
Yes.
in the paper legally.
Yeah.
And now you're saying that, or the council has said that the money is coming from the parking fund and not the general fund, does that make it null and void that at this point in time, and it's probably a legal question, I'm asking you all.
Right.
Does that make it null and void that if the residents wanted to petition?
Right.
I think that's a big question aside from all the other questions, and Melanie, you'll be happy to know, we walked. I would ask, probably if I had to ask a show of hands, even if, of council, how many people drove here tonight, it'd probably be a lot. So I don't, I'm with you, we walked.
Let me ask the attorney.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I mean, that, the, the city is utilizing special bond council with respect to that. Council at its last meeting did pass a resolution, I don't have the resolution before me, I heard council note that there was a reference to a general obligation bond rather than a revenue bond.
I have it if you'd like to see it.
Well, but it, it, it is a resolution that was prepared by the city's bond council.
Okay.
And I think it's appropriate to get a specific answer to that issue as to whether there would have to be a new notice as it relates to that resolution, and that's something that we can look into.
We'll ask our bond council and, and let you know.
In very quick order.
Yeah.
Right, because, because as we all know, it's 45 days from the date it was published, which was on the 5th.
Right.
And if this is going to be null and void, and you're going to reissue a bond, and you force it to a vote, we need to know where to start from and what that really looks like.
Right.
I would prefer not to have the bond or any bonds issued until a complete public engagement process happens. So if we could get those questions answered, I think a lot of people watching.
And, and we will. And, and so on that point, so I'll take the last word, I, I, I got to be honest, I've been one of the people pushing Joe and our committees, hurry up, I'd like to see some shovels in the ground, this parking problem has existed for a long time, and I've been a little impatient.
Quickly and thoughtfully?
Quickly and thought, hopefully. And yet, we've, we've let this process play out over the last year and a half because we wanted to get this kind of input. So if, if today pushes us back a month or two, I'd rather do this right than do it quickly. So that is my other assurance. And I'm one of the biggest proponents of hurry up and get shovels in the ground, I wanted them in the ground this year just because it takes a year to build a parking deck. Brian Kramer will shoot me because I promised him we'd get shovels in the ground this year, but forget that, my commitment is that we'll do it right and we'll explore what's legal and what the designs come back and the input that we get. And we'll get this right and we'll do some, you know what, it's taken us 20 years, if it takes us an extra couple of months to get this right and that, so that the community accepts it, I'm good with that, okay? All right. And we will get you an answer to that. So George would like the, the last word and.
I thought I posed a limit on how many restaurants we're going to be on the island because I just found out today, next public count going another restaurant, Asian restaurant. I find out Mr. Kramer, we're going to buy Mr. Kramer, we're going to close the outside and put another restaurant and do the deck, so that's meaning your 200 parking deck and parties in the back is going to be obsolete.
So you brought up a much bigger issue than we can quickly address now, but, but I will tell you, because we've done, we've taken a number of steps, including our park, our payment in lieu of parking and other steps to try to minimize the growth of bars and restaurants, I'll have somebody get ahold of you, George, and we know where you live. Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you everyone very much for coming out, we really do appreciate it. Phew, all right. You know what I'm going to do is we are going to take, let's take a five minute break, because I think everyone up here's mouth is dry and maybe.
Someone needs to turn the temperature down like 23.
We're going to take a five minute recess. Turn the temperature down.
It smells like 100.
So, we just called the audience. So, now, if there's anyone here that would like to address council on something other than parking, because we, you had your opportunity to do that, but if you'd like to address council on something other than the parking structure this evening, please come on up. You get three minutes, give us your name and address, and welcome.
Hi, Julia Music, 436 Silman, and I just want to talk about gay things tonight and how. Ferndale Pride is coming up on June 3rd if it's approved here at council tonight, so I wanted to tell you about some of the exciting things we have going on leading up to Ferndale Pride. We have a March Madness game coming up next weekend over at Jay's Penalty Box. They're gonna donate 20% of their revenue to Ferndale Pride during a March Madness game, so come drink and watch your March Madness game at Jay's. A fundraiser first Wednesday in April, April and May at Rosie's, and May 16th at Zeke's. We'll be having a fundraiser there as well, and we have a Hot Daddies contest coming up. And I do believe that there are several council members who are eligible to be Hot Daddy, so if anyone wants to sign up.
Daddy, yes. Hot, I don't know.
We also, as always, need volunteers, and you can sign up to volunteer at ferndalepride.com. And as of today, you can also sign up to be married at Pride. So, if you're interested in being married at Pride, we're having our wedding this year at The Red Door, so we have a new location. Should be a very fun party for the lucky couples who get married during the Pride Festival. That's all.
Thank you, Julia.
Is there a weight category for Hot Daddies?
We like all shapes and sizes.
All shapes.
As long as you bring people to buy tickets.
All right. Thanks, Julia. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for waiting.
Oh, no problem. My name is Chris Reddick, and I am the Relay for Life Community Manager for Ferndale, and I'm here with my volunteer, Michelle Sebula, who has been our event lead for the better part of this last decade. If approved tonight, we have a special events permit to move our Relay for Life to downtown Ferndale, so we're very excited about that this year.
Us too.
And it is our 10th anniversary of relaying here in Ferndale, so I just wanted to briefly share some of the opportunities that this community has to fight back against cancer. So, our relay event would be, we're calling it Festival of Hope this year, since we're gonna be new location, more of a festival feel. That'll be June 10th, 10:00 a.m. to midnight here in downtown Ferndale. So, we are looking for members of our planning committee, we are looking for DA volunteers. It really, you know, takes a whole community to fight against cancer, so we definitely need your help if you're interested or want to get involved with the event. It's relayforlife.org/ferndalemI. It's the best place to get all of our contact information. We also have a fundraiser this weekend, Drag Queen Bingo, at the Royal Oaks Elk Club. That will be, doors open at 6:30, the showtime is at 7:00, and balls drop at 8:00. And if you love dogs and hate cancer, we're looking to have a Bark for Life event this year, which is an event for canine caregivers that support their cancer survivors. So, we are looking for community members who would be interested in helping us plan that, so please get in touch with us. Thank you so much.
Excellent, Chris. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle, for all you guys do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We're really excited at the opportunity to be downtown and for all the support you guys give us. Looking forward to a Ferndale City team this year. CARA's getting us going. Much for the opportunity, and thanks again for all your support.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll see you on June 10th.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, sir. Again, thanks for waiting.
Oh, yeah. I had no idea this was going on. I came here to... I'm here to, first off, my name's Lance Starler. I'm here to confirm that you guys are selling, or have approved the sale of 857 Camden to me? I think that was supposed to be on...
It's on the agenda this evening.
Okay, so just sit tight.
So, yes, because you'll get a chance to...
You get to wait even back to your seat.
Not much longer, but just a little longer. All right. Thanks, Lance. All right. Anyone else from the public that would like to address council this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll close, call the audience, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is items that council adopts in one motion unless somebody on council removes something from the consent agenda. So, let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held February 13, 2017. Item B is the approval of the purchase of two HIPAA compliant, HIPAA compliant workstations with encrypted hard drives to be installed by DA Central to be paid from the fire department's communications account. Item C is the approval of the service agreement between the city of Ferndale and the Good Neighbor's Garden, and to have it signed by the mayor and clerk. Item D is the approval of the purchase of one Hewlett-Packard Proliant DL380 CTO server from Vision Network Solutions LLC. Item E is the approval of the resolution dated 3/13/17, which memorializes our decision on 2/13/17 to approve the Brownfield Plan and reimbursement agreement for 409 online apartments. Item F is the approval of ordinance number 1193 to amend Chapter 16, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 1, in general, to amend Section 16-12 of the Ferndale Code. Item G is the approval to authorize the City of Ferndale Code of Ordinance as council members Leaks May, Martin, Pollocka, and Mayor Pro Tempiana to attend the Michigan Municipal League's Capitol Conference on March 21st to the 22nd in Lansing, Michigan. Item H is the approval of a special event permit for Run for the Angels on Saturday, April 22nd of this year. Item I is the approval of a special event permit for Relay for Life Ferndale on Saturday, June 10th, 2017 of this year. Item J is the approval of a special event permit for 2017 Ferndale Pride on Saturday, June 3rd of this year, as detailed in the recommended action summary to reflect the consensus of the Special Events Committee, by the way. Item K is the approval of a special event permit for Rainbow Run on Saturday, June 3rd of this year. Item L is the approval of a special event permit for Brews and Barbecue on June 16, 17, and 18th of this year. Item M is the approval of a special event permit for Oktoberfest on October 6th, 7th, and 8th, and to authorize my signature on such. And finally, item N is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to review by the council's finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
I don't want to pull anything, but I'd like to request that when we put these consent agendas together, that we put the dollar expenditure amount on the requests on the agenda.
Okay.
So, residents don't have to go in deep. And for the record, item B is $5,836.96, and item D is $14,980. Thanks.
And we've typically done that, so I don't know if that was an oversight, but we should, yep, I think that should be consistent. And are you making a motion?
Well, I'd like to make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Pollocka and supported by Martin. Now, is there any other discussion on the consent agenda this evening?
I have a clarification.
Yes.
And I believe this goes to Lloyd, if I may through the chair. On 6C, the Good Neighbor's Garden contract is only for a year. Is there a reason why we wouldn't look at more than just a year? If it was an agreement with them, they didn't want to do more than a year, or just...
When the, and the city attorney can speak to, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure he would, but initially, it was a new process, and the agreement was ironed out more of, more or less as a trial period. They did not get a full year in last year, and so, the idea was to allow them a full year and then see how that goes as far as... I can tell council, though, we received absolutely no problems or complaints from the area residents, and we had no difficulty working with them.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Other comments or questions on the consent agenda? By anyone, by the way, in the public as well? All right. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Council members, Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Pollocka.
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Moving on now to another appointment, the consideration of appointment of Deanna Tartaglia to the Ferndale Housing Commission. And Heather, I will let you introduce her. Yeah. Why don't you, yeah, just come on up and, and Anne as well, of course, yep.
All of you. Housing Commission is in the house. And you learned more about parking decks than you ever thought that you would want to know.
That's okay. What a night.
Good evening.
Good evening to you all. Anne Heller, 1024 Leroy, speaking now as Board President of the Ferndale Housing Commission. And I'm very, very pleased to announce that we have selected a member for your consideration to be elected to the board, Deanna Tartaglia. She comes with skills that are not currently represented on the board. She works in social work and also has a lot of experience with Section 8 and voucher work. In her work previous to us, she used to work with a neighborhood, NSO Neighborhood Service Organization. So, we are very, very pleased. This, by the way, if the vote, if you absolutely approve, this means that we will now have a full complement. The board will now be complete for the first time in quite some time, and so we are very, very pleased. So, I would hope that you would consider. Do you have any questions? Is there anything?
No, just, I'd just give Deanna, you know, a minute to say hi and why you want to be on the Housing Commission. We appreciate your willingness to serve, of course.
Thank you for having me. I sort of felt moved. Back in January, I went to Washington, DC and participated in the Women's March, and I realized that women are continuously underrepresented in most traditional governments. Not this one, we're Ferndale, we're special. But I felt like a call to contribute to my immediate community. And I thought, what am I good at? Not a lot, but I...
A lot, a lot.
I decided that since I'm a social worker and I have some experience in housing, I've worked for both Community Housing Network in Troy as well as Neighborhood Service Organization in Detroit, both on grant-based programs to get some homeless folks off the streets and into places so they can, you know, have an opportunity to contribute to their communities as well. So, I decided that the Housing Commission just kind of made sense for me, and then when I saw there was an opening, I thought, time to lean in, girl. So, I did.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Anyone have questions?
I would just say that if you think parking was exciting, you should have seen the old Housing Commission meetings.
You're the second person to say that to me, so...
Yeah, you're welcome. I'm so glad you're here. Thank you.
So, is there a motion?
I would move that we confirm the appointment of Deanna Tartaglia to the Ferndale Housing Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2019.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Any further comments or questions?
Other than welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Thank you.
Council members, Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Pollocka.
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Moving on to item C is the consideration of the interlocal agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and the city of Ferndale for Plan Review and Inspection Services. And Jordan is gonna introduce that item.
See, and I thought most people were excited about this item, but I was wrong. So, hi, council. Hi, everybody. So, again, this item is essentially, it's, as you read so aptly, it's an interlocal agreement between us and our friends to the north in Pleasant Ridge. Essentially, what this, it really hinges on, there's the Walker Wire property, the former E-Prize... Service Organization in Detroit, both on grant-based programs to get some homeless folks off the streets and into places so they can, you know, have an opportunity to contribute to their communities as well. So I decided that the Housing Commission just kind of made sense for me and then when I saw there was an opening, I thought, time to lean in, girl, so I did.
Excellent, well, thank you. Anyone have questions?
I would just say that if you think parking was exciting, you should have seen the old Housing Commission meetings.
You're the second person to say that to me, so...
Yeah, you're welcome, I'm so glad you're here, thank you.
So is there a motion?
I would move that we confirm the appointment of Deanna Tartaglia to the Ferndale Housing Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2019.
Support. Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Any further comments or questions?
Other than welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Thank you.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Pollocka.
Yes, thank you, that appointment is adopted. Moving on to item C is the consideration of the interlocal agreement between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the City of Ferndale for plan review and inspection services. And Jordan is going to introduce that item.
See, and I thought most people were excited about this item, but I was wrong. So, hi council, hi everybody. So again, this item is essentially, it's, as you read so aptly, it's an interlocal agreement between us and our friends to the north in Pleasant Ridge. Essentially what this, it really hinges on, there's the Walker Wire property, the former E. Price Building, which overlaps Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge. And while this interlocal covers, technically it would allow citywide these joint services, but essentially we wanted to have a framework in place so that we could partner on this property and others that share our jurisdictions to provide a streamlined experience in terms of consistency, both for us on the municipal side as well as developers looking at these properties. So there's one, one consistent method of inspection, both cities on the same page, just to kind of create more of a redevelopment-ready, business-friendly, but also streamline government service model for these properties that kind of straddle jurisdictions. So that's really what this is about. There's a framework for compensation here. This will make sure that, you know, we're made whole as a city if we provide these services and vice versa for Pleasant Ridge. And essentially, again, it just allows for a more streamlined experience. We have one set of inspectors looking at this rather than, you know, two of us looking at different portions of the building and trying to compare notes and things like that. So it just kind of streamlines that process.
All right. Are there questions of Jordan?
I do, through the chair.
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about the liability and indemnification part, or maybe it's Dan? I read that the Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale show solely responsible and they're going to hold us whole harmless as much as they can, but that doesn't really extend our liability if a resident would file suit against us, correct? And then the second part of that question is if so, what have we done to mitigate that greater risk?
So I'll let Dan jump in on the tactical nature of that, but in general, what this allows is essentially the framework creates as close to, as possible to an experience as if we were inspecting our own property. We'd still have the same governmental immunities, the same rights and privileges of a municipality as if we were inspecting one of our own commercial properties. And Dan, if I'm wrong on that, please correct me or if there are additional details to help clarify that, but that's, that's my understanding of the framework that we've put together here.
Well, through the chair, that's accurate, that the city would still have its normal defenses as it relates to governmental immunity. However, the issue of the indemnification provision does provide that each community is responsible essentially for its own acts, errors, or omissions of its employees and agents and so to the extent that the community, particular, one of the particular communities provides that service in the adjacent community, there, there would be that exposure to the extent that it exists.
And did we review when we, when we looked at this then, the existing liability protections, i.e. insurance or what have you, that is sufficient enough to cover the agreement?
Well, again, through the chairs, each community would have its own insurance and any claim against, by virtue of the City of Ferndale's work, the City of Ferndale would have its insurance that would, that would address that exposure.
Allow me to reframe the question. If this agreement, does this agreement cause us to take further action of our own insurance or does what we have cover us?
It does, through the chair, it does not require any additional rider to the city's insurance.
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I was wondering what the similar, do we have a mirror process with Pleasant Ridge and are their fees, permit fees, the same? I'm just wondering if there was a difference between how we do site plan review with how they do site plan review and if there's anything that we should be, I know it's sort of straight, straight up, but sometimes it's through the interpretation of the individual conducting site plan review and so I was just making sure, how are we making sure, even though you're following a checklist in the review process, that you're following the higher level, you know, elements in the, in the Iron Ridge, like sort of district plan, I don't know what to call it, right?
Sure, sure. Now, there's, there's minor differences in the way that we go about it, but those are typically tied to the different natures of our communities. I mean, we're calibrated to the unique nuances of our community. One thing about this interlocal agreement is it requires pre-planning and preconsultation. So it's not like they, you know, it's not like Jim's going to send his team and be able to just inspect a property without prior approval of us. And in that, in that review and consultation and planning, there'd be that conversation about standards. In general, you know, they know the nuances of their buildings, we know the nuances of ours, but obviously, you know, the International Building Code still applies, the Michigan Building Code and sort of those standardized laws still apply.
And so my final, I guess, in summary, you know, we pride ourselves on being business-friendly and I think this is what you're trying to do, is streamline the process for a business owner. So I think it's very unique and I applaud the, applaud the, you know, attempt to try something different here.
Thank you. Well, that sounds like it lends itself to a motion.
Oh, well, all right. Let me go back up. I move that city council approve the proposed interlocal agreement between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the City of Ferndale for plan review and inspection services and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Leaks May. Any other discussion or questions, comments? All right, Marty, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Pollocka.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thanks, Jordan. The next item is item E, consideration of the sale of 208 Pinecrest. And who's introducing that item? Is that also Jordan?
Jordan's pretty much hitting it all the way down the line there.
I just brought my whole, my whole stack here. So, hi again, long time no see. So again, this is, as was aptly read, this is the consideration of the sale of 208 Pinecrest, vacant residential lot located one street north of Eight Mile Road on the east side of Pinecrest for sale at, we've listed it at $12,000, but the offer on the table is $9,000. Now, this property has been on the market for over a year, listed with Jim Schaefer and Associates. In addition to your, the packet in terms of the offer and the purchase agreement and those other sorts of documents that are typical of a property sale, I did get an opinion from Jim in terms of what he thought of the offer, given the length of time that this property's been on the market and its limitations in terms of size, relatively narrow lot as far as residential properties go. Felt like the offer should be seriously considered, given the location of the area and the different challenges therein. I also have the prospective buyer and builder here to speak about their vision for the property as well, because one of the things that I'll point out, contingent in the purchase agreement is contingent on their getting approval to build a shipping container home. So it's a rather unique infill development strategy.
You're talking very quickly, a shipping what?
A shipping container home. And so it's, it's one of those emerging sort of unique design trends as well. Obviously, there's the understanding that, that the structure would have to comply with local code as well as the International Building Code, et cetera. But because that's a unique concept, we obviously wanted to have the builder here to kind of talk about that vision. There should be some documents on the dais as well, kind of reviewing sort of an example of what that looks like. So I'm going to let Thomas Gaunt give a, give a few words about his vision, he's here right behind me, as well as the builder. So I'm going to hand it over to them to answer any of your questions as well.
Thank you, I'm Tom Gaunt, I'm with Keller Williams Realty in Commerce Township. I'm here with Dirk Moore, who's the builder of this made in Michigan, I like to call it, made in Michigan home, even though the container itself, I put a handful of these up there on the desks for you folks, so some of you should have these to look at. It's, it's a shipping container. So the whole concept here is to promote the green living. We have all these shipping containers stacked up in all these yards and there's nowhere for them to go. This is a great way for them to be used. It's big out in Washington and Oregon and is moving its, moving its way across the country. There's one in Royal Oak that was built and that is a, I think, a five or six container home.
Are they typically multi-container?
You know, it can be as small as this one, which is a 300 square foot option, and this one's very custom. If you look at some of the pictures and you actually get inside this unit, you feel like it's a lot larger than it actually looks from the outside. The exterior doors on the one end open all the way up for a sliding glass door, you can put a, a small deck and a patio, you could put a, you can stack them multiple high, you can put them T, you can put them in so, so many different ways. Our vision for this is we want to move this one to that lot.
Okay.
So we're actually going to take this one and put it on that lot. If this one sells before that happens, we'll take and we will duplicate this one on that lot. So the contingency for us is, we want to make sure the council approves us putting this container, which is that many square feet, on that lot.
And then one other thing is just some of the other building requirements like foundations and, and more technical aspects of it. So those are obviously conversations to happen with the building department, but we just wanted to approach you with the initial concept and say, here's our idea, is this feasible for the, for the community to accept that?
And we're typically not the arbiter of that, that's usually the planning commission, but, and so I guess maybe a question to Jordan is, so they haven't seen this yet, could they still, could we approve the sale and then they say, no, where does, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so, so and I'll seek clarification from Justin on this, but I do believe, my understanding is it would not require a planning commission approval.
Oh, okay.
So we did consult with the chair of the planning commission, just to kind of get a feel for this design concept and obviously it would have to go through building code inspection. So that would really be the, the piece of leverage the city would have, is to ensure that it meets city code, that it satisfies the ordinance, and that would obviously be a full-scale review.
All right, and I think you said elevations. Are you meaning the platform? I'm looking online at Google Images of other units and a lot of them are on either stilts or on a raised platform. Is that what you're envisioning here and we just need to work with the building inspection to figure out the best platform for this land?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, there's, there's concerns that we have, these things are meant to be placed on their corner posts. They're designed in a way where they have a very minimal impact on where, to sustain the structure itself. So there's relatively high-end costs if we're required to put a full foundation and, you know, crawl space, all these things, and we certainly understand that we need to comply with the codes, but there is a price point where it kind of exceeds our, our ability to make this a living space for somebody.
Yeah, because I, if I may through the chair, I have to question like utility hookups, you know? We have crawl spaces in basements for a reason. Water needs to be dug so many feet below so the pipes don't freeze.
Right.
You know, and if you have them coming up through the surface just through, you know, just through the bottom of the unit, you're risking, you know, pipes freezing.
Yeah.
You know, electricity has to be so high, well, I guess you could get by with a extension pipe off the top of the thing, but I just, I just, I find it interesting, don't get me wrong, it's, it's...
How does it work?
How does it work in Michigan? I can understand certain climates where it's...
The intention would be like a conditioned crawl space and that's kind of, you know, a minimal price impact, but it also addresses your concerns, which is, yeah, we need conditioned space for pipes and things to come through and water not to freeze. So, you know, again, those are all conversations that we wanted to have with the building department and make sure we complied, but just approach you with the...
You know, floor, floor, little floor wall heaters only work so far, you know, on heating up a space, though this is kind of a small space too, but interesting, very interesting.
Through the chair.
Yes.
So two questions. One, how big is the, the, how big, I mean, the property, the square footage of the property is, how much?
Should be in your packet, there with me.
I don't see, does it say? I don't think it's... And the second question is, the premium model, what's the difference between a premium model and, I guess, a not premium model?
Yeah.
Yes.
Whatever the client recommends and their budget, basically. We, we built this as our prototype for our business plan to do multiples of these and we wanted to put our best foot forward, so this is very custom, all the finishes are very unique and very specific to, you know, type of buyer that we envisioned. So it's just a matter of the different material selections that are made, the layout to some degree, and we made a very higher-end living space. So we love the idea of, of taking this and having other, more affordable options that fit into other city plans, you know, and that's just a matter of more, more affordable finishes and things like that.
The reason why I wanted to know about the footage is because I wanted to know how many can fit in one spot.
In one lot?
In one lot.
Well, they're made to stack up to seven high, so they lend themselves to student housing, to apartment buildings, to a lot, a lot more than just ground level. There's a lot of really interesting things that have been done with them and they've stacked them seven high for apartment buildings and they're very ubiquitous, like Tom mentioned, they're all over the place and they have no use right now. So they're, they're a perfect building block for a lot of applications. Maybe parking garages, I don't know.
Don't go there.
Yeah, boy, do we walk into a hornet's nest tonight. The lot itself is 40 feet wide by 115 feet deep, it's .11 acres according to the...
.11 acres, okay.
If I may through the chair, the due diligence period in the purchase agreement is 30 days. If you're uncertain about the need for the planning commission, you're not going to get through in 30 days. I have a concern about that. If you decide you have to go to the planning commission, you're going to be well outside your due diligence period.
I have to double-check the agreement, but I do believe it allows for the extension by another 30 days upon the request of the purchaser. That being said, we would obviously work with, if council approves a sale tonight, we would obviously work with them through the process. But I do believe it is just a building plan review that would be required here.
So 60 days you'd be comfortable with?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, our only concern is to make sure that it's approved, that we can actually put this unit there, because, you know, I know there's a lot of community issues with square footage minimums and a lot of times a home like this doesn't fit those square footage minimums. Now, this lot looks like it's built perfectly for this house because it's small. It's small and skinny.
Jordan, this doesn't violate any sort of minimum square footage requirements that currently, right?
No, I don't believe so. We'd obviously give that a second look during the building review process, but I do not believe, I do not believe so.
Okay.
So you could just load this up on what, a flatbed and take it with you or, yeah?
Yeah, essentially, like, you'll see, there's a big tiny house movement right now and they're all built on trailers to fit into the RV type of zoning and our intention is more permanent structures. So they're movable, we're not promoting this as like a portable house, but you can move them very easily.
Greg, you should have bought one of these rather than your camper.
By the time we spend the money for the sewer hookup, the water hookup, the electric hookup and the foundation, you're not going to want to move it.
Yeah.
Is the placement of the, I guess, because it doesn't go through site plan, technically this could be placed anywhere on the lot, but the, the way that our, the houses line up on the street is how are we going to maintain the continuity of the, the street?
Yeah, I looked at the, I went and took a look at the lot and the front face of all of the structures would be the same as this and then it doesn't protrude back.
You're not going to be setback, you're going to be sort of in line with the rest of the houses?
Yeah, I measured the other buildings next to it and they're all very consistent in terms of the space that they take up. So it doesn't, it wouldn't look like horribly protruding forward or anything of that nature.
Okay.
Which is the front?
The part with the sliding doors would essentially be the front.
That would be, okay, that would be through the street.
There's going to be a lot more curb appeal than, than this, this is just stripped down for transportation purposes, but we plan on, you know, planter boxes and a bit more curb appeal to sell it and things like that.
Okay. And then my final comment is just sort of what the housing prices are around there, just for FYI for council. The house just south of it is at 70K and with a structure on it and the house immediately north of it is 117K if I'm going with the inexact pricing of Zillow. So just sort of benchmarking what the price sale is without a, without a structure and with a structure.
So a motion would be in order.
I just have one other question. Has any conversation been had with the neighbors? Are they aware that this type of structure?
No, no, not yet.
No, okay.
When's the gas station? Right, Citco, it's right next to Citco.
No, there's a corner house and then...
Yeah, there's, there's a home on either side, I see, I'm sorry, okay. I did it on the wrong.
I would move that if city council resolves to approve the purchase agreement for the sale of 208 Pinecrest City Parcel 25-33-479-005 and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the purchase agreement and all associated instruments necessary to complete
the purchase agreement and all associated instruments necessary to complete the sale with proceeds to be placed in the Community and Economic Development Line 101.371.673, sale of city property.
Is there support?
I support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, can we clarify at the end of that resolution that to be put into fund balance, committed into fund balance for further use?
Thank you. I would like to amend my ordinance. It says to complete the sale with the proceeds to be placed into fund balance for further use.
And Piana, is there a friendly amendment to you?
Yes, friendly amendment.
All right. All right, final questions, comments on this item? All right, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for sticking with us all night.
You're up.
Item E. Item E is the consideration of the sale of 857 Camden.
There you go, that's perfect. Points for sticking around. So, another property sale today, so 857 Camden is another vacant residential lot owned by the city. It's at Camden and Fair Street, which is north of Eight Mile Road, near the CN and Ramon terminal. We had listed it for $14,000. It's been on the market for over 180 days. We received four offers for the property ranging from $14,000 to $20,000, and so staff brought you the highest one, the $20,000 offer, which is before you today. Mr. Lance Starler is here, the proposed buyer, to speak on his vision for the property. But again, also listed through Jim Schaefer, who recommended that we take the offer very seriously. Obviously, we had multiple offers, the highest one, it's over asking, and so it is here before you today, and I'd invite Mr. Starler to talk about his vision for the property as well.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I was, this is my first city council meeting, so I didn't know what to expect. So, I only brought one copy that's an artist rendering comparable to what the last few gentlemen were talking about, utilizing those containers to make a modern space. So, there's some green aspects of it, but also architecture, I like those sharp lines. That's a multiple containers combined with stick build. The builder I use has had success already on multiple properties, going through planning and for sale in the city of Ferndale. I'm guessing somewhere between 280 to 320,000 dollars once it's built, so that'll be a nice amount of tax dollars for you guys.
Thank you.
And if there's any other parcels that you want to let me get my hands on or condemn homes, I'd love to continue to beautify the city, so.
Thank you. All right, and any questions or comments?
Just a comment. Jordan, have you briefed them fully on what's happening at the CN Railroad in that neighborhood?
Yes, we talked a little bit about that. There is an expansion of the terminal. There's obviously a mitigation agreement going on with CN and the city that will help mitigate some of the aesthetic impacts of that expansion, also the quiet zone work that we're going to be doing to mitigate the need for them to blow the horns as they pass through at the various intersections in the city.
I think if I may piggyback on the Mayor Protem's question, but also cognizance of the height that will change of the cars at the railroad?
Yes, thank you, that's a, that's a great point. So, as part of the mitigation agreement, and Dan, if I'm wrong on this, obviously, I'll pull my leash length here, but essentially, they'll be required to go no higher than three containers high, and those containers can't be placed within 90 feet of the property line, I believe that's the case.
Within a certain distance from the wall. Okay. Through the Chair, there is a height limitation on stacking of containers, but only for a certain distance to the wall. Beyond that, there is not any restriction with respect to the height. I want to say it's 30 feet from the wall, but again, I can get that information to the city manager for tomorrow morning.
I just want to make sure the buyer's fully aware of what's going on there.
Absolutely.
And then, I guess I'm going to channel Greg here and trump your question, but are we notifying the residents around there, too?
I've actually had a good conversation with one of the neighbors as well, but I haven't had the opportunity to meet the neighbor on the other side yet.
I encourage you to do that. It's a change.
Change is good.
For some.
Yes, sir.
I am the beholder of the change.
You're certainly a patient man, we've learned that today.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move that city council resolves to approve the purchase agreement for the sale of 857 Camden, City Parcel T5-35-352-062, and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the purchase agreement, all association instruments necessary to complete the sale with proceeds to be kept in the fund for future use.
Support. Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Now, other questions or comments? Jordan, I might, I'm going to ask you, and I'm sorry if I put you on the spot, because you might not have this, but how many other residential lots do we own?
You know what? That was something we were talking about as a department today. We, as you remember, I started here in August, and we had, we had a list that's about a little over a year old, and that's something that our department's still working on, is combing through and seeing exactly how many of those we still have. I know the city has, has sold off quite a few pieces of property over the past several years, so we're, we're still working on that, and I'll have that to you as soon as possible.
Thanks. All right, other questions or comments? All right, Marty, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thank you for your patience, sir. Item F is the consideration to purchase a 200-kilowatt diesel generator. That's a Lloyd item this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As council is aware, this building houses both the city hall and the police department. In times of crisis, disaster, emergency, this operates as a command center. Just in the last few years, we have had power failures, floods, and other instances where this building has not been operational due to the circumstances.
It must.
To combat that, council authorized a study by Burbigule Associates, and then authorized Burbigule Associates to also develop bid specs for a, what is, what ultimately becomes a 400-watt, I'm sorry, a 200-kilowatt diesel generator with a 400-gallon diesel fuel John Burbigule is here, in the event that council has any questions. We did advertise for bid, we received eight bids, and the low bid was McNulty Electric at 153.7, and it is our recommendation that council approve that.
All right, questions or comments for Lloyd?
Just a comment through the Chair. I really like the way you detail when it goes to bid, and it's very clear that we bid this out. We don't always do that, and that feels like, I think, a best practice of what you should bring to council, so I really appreciate how you wrote this up.
A motion would be in order.
I move to approve the low bid of 1,000, 153,700 of McNulty Electric to provide and install a new 200-kilowatt diesel generator with integral 400-gallon diesel fuel tank, and that the DPW director be authorized to execute the contact, oh my God, execute the contract contingent upon city attorney, approval of the bonds and insurance, and the expense would be charged to the general fund capital account.
Support. All right, moved by Piana and supported by Leaks May. Other final comments or questions? All right, Marty, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thank you, Lloyd. Item G is the consideration to schedule a public hearing for Monday, March 27, 2017, for the non-renewal of Class C liquor licenses. And Dan, is that you, or, I mean, I know this is something we do on an annual basis, obviously?
This is, through the Chair, an item that is considered by council on an annual basis as it relates to non-compliance with respect to the resolution that's been adopted by council as to criteria that it applies to its licensed liquor establishments. And so, there is an opportunity once a year for the council to weigh in with respect to the, any type of objection to the renewal of a licensed establishment. It has to be undertaken and provided to the Liquor Control Commission prior, 30 days prior to the renewal license, which is May 1st, so it has to happen in March. And so, before you, as a proposed request to schedule a public hearing for the second meeting of this month, March 27, to consider any potential public hearings for licensed establishments that are in violation. I believe there's supposed to be a document that identifies them, I think that may be in your packet.
I received it after the package was put out. I do have the information, but it's not...
Okay, so, so that would identify the particular establishments, and those establishments will be provided notice, mailed written notice this week before the public hearing.
Before the 27th, so that they can, they can take care of it if they so choose before the 27th.
Historically, most of them have.
Yes. Excellent. Does anybody want that list from Marty in advance?
We'll send it to you. We'll have it at the public hearing.
We'll have it at the public hearing, certainly. But we need it in advance if there's someone, just let Marty know. Okay. All right, is there a motion?
I move to direct that the public hearing be scheduled for Monday, May 27, 2017, at 7:00 PM regarding the non-renewal of Class C liquor licenses, and that the city attorney's office repair and have served appropriate legal notice of the scheduled hearing to any establishments that are not in compliance with the provisions of the Ferndale City Council's resolution adopted on March 28, 1988, as attached, to be attached, and/or those establishments that are delinquent and pay taxes or water bills that were due by February 28, 2017, according to the finance director's report.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Pollocka, supported by Leaks May. Any other discussion, comments? All right, Marty, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. And now, moving on to our final regular agenda item. Item H is the consideration to approve design funding for the West Troy Parking Development.
This agenda is just really connected to the progress update I just presented on, and I can resummarize what I heard. If approved, the design, we would come back with two designs for the public input. One would include what was presented initially, the Phase 1 concept, and one would include a standalone deck, and we would also come back with information in terms of estimated timelines and estimated cost for each concept. And I believe that's what, that is what is being connected to the design recommendation today.
If I may through the Chair, I think you also need to include a revised resident outreach, business outreach planner program, based on what I heard today.
We will be working with the DDA to improve that.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
It's 10 o'clock.
It's 10 o'clock. It's in there, though.
I'm looking for it.
I know, I caught you off guard.
I found it.
All right.
I'll go. I move to approve, approve funding for design phase for the West Troy Parking Development for funds not to exceed 150,000 to be paid from the auto parking fund.
Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Other discussion on this one?
Do we need to mention with the changes, or no? Or the...
I think Joe was clear on the direction.
I think that, Joe, you have your direction and clarity, so, yep, it doesn't need to be, yep, because a motion's general enough to cover that. All right, good point. Yep, all right. Anything else? All right, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Moving on now to call to council. I see the police chief way back there. Anything for the, go to the community chief. All right, sitting next to him is Jenny from HR. Anything, Jenny, from the HR department this evening? Yes. Three hours and five minutes later.
It will not take that long. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight just to let the public know that we have posted and are accepting applications for the deputy parks and rec director position. You can visit our website at www.ferndalemi.gov and take a look at that position and submit your application if you're interested, so, thank you.
Thank you. And on her very first day in Ferndale, Lorena, anything from the recreation department this evening?
No, there are no updates tonight.
All right. Would have been really impressed if there was.
I would like to formally introduce her, though. That is Lorena Wheeler. She is our new director of Parks and Recreation, and she, it was her first day today, so it was baptism by fire. She comes with us with over 15 years' experience with the city of Detroit, working in multiple capacities, a lot in the planning area as it relates to some of the parks, such as the Detroit Riverfront, Quintercut Rails, Riverside Parks, worked with Com Boom. She's also the only one on her resume is a certified aerobic skin instructor, at the same time certified as a stormwater operator and soil erosion sediment controller. So, I just felt, you know, at that point, we have to at least meet her. I know, right? So, we're really excited to have her on board, and again, she starts today. Jill will be with us for a little bit longer on a part-time basis to ease Lorena into her role and help us finish a few last-minute things, and in line with that, as Jenny said, we are, we wait, we help, we are resubmitting for her counterpart, which is the deputy director of Parks and Recreation, so this will be, we're going back out for that now that Lorena is here. So, thank you.
So, again, Lorena, welcome to Ferndale, and I will just add that I think you're coming at a very exciting time. This is a community that has rededicated itself to its parks, both in spirit and financially, and we've just adopted, thanks to the work of Greg and the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, our master plan for parks. The challenge now is going to be prioritizing those and figure out how we move through that master plan, because it's a huge document, it's more than we can afford in the first year, and so really look forward to your expertise in helping guide us in that prioritization as well, so, thanks and glad you're on board. Jordan, anything else from Community Economic Development this evening?
Nothing else.
All right, Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
All right, we'll go this way. Anything else from finance this evening, Joe? All right, Cara, community and communications and community engagement, anything from your...
Anything this evening, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Lloyd, we had snow today and wind last week, just to keep your guys, your folks busy. Yeah, yep.
Just a quick note to the residents, as I'm sure they're all aware, due to the power shortages that are still occurring, we had a significant windstorm in addition to, you know, in addition to the trees and everything else. There was one thing I noticed as we made our survey after the storm, there were a number of trashcans that were picked up and carried away by the wind, it was so severe. And, you know, it's, it's, if, when they're carried away, a couple of houses or even a block or more, there's no way to return those unless they're labeled. So, just a simple tip, if you want to improve your chances of getting your trashcan back, take a Sharpie, write your address on it, at least the public works, or perhaps one of your neighbors might be, you know, see whose address it is and return it to you, so, thank you.
That's great logical advice.
And your recycle bins.
Oh, and, yep, great. And I would just say, great job to your folks during the windstorm. We had, I think, in excess of 20 trees knocked over, countless limbs, and I got nothing, and I think we all just received nothing but high praise for the, the speed and professionalism with folks, with which your folks cleaned Ferndale up, so, appreciate that very much. Joe, anything else from the city, the assistant city manager? No? All right, all right. Marty, anything from the city clerk's office?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right. April, anything else from the city manager?
Just a couple of things, again, very quick. I just wanted to acknowledge that the majority of the city of Ferndale is back online with power. There are a few snippets of people that are out right now, but according to my source at VTE, everybody should be up again by tonight, so we should have it, everybody back online. I also just want to do a shout-out to all of our employees that stepped up over the weekend to ensure that we had a warming center open, and we were open on Friday at 9:00 AM until Sunday at 5:00 PM, so we appreciate everybody who stepped up to the plate to help and assist in keeping that open. We didn't have a lot of takers, but we felt that it was important to have it there just in case the people really needed to be there.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that, and whether people take it or not, the fact that it's available to people in a very difficult situation, that's not something we did a few years ago, and we're sort of regularly thinking about that, and kudos to the recreation folks for, for keeping the center open. Dan?
We do have a scheduled closed session this evening, but nothing further. We do have a scheduled closed session this evening, but nothing further.
Okay. Councilman Martin?
Yeah, I'd like to share some of my thoughts on parking mitigation. No, I'm kidding, y'all look panicked. Two things. One, I want to wish a very happy...
I was getting a gamble ready.
I want to wish a very happy birthday to Mayor Colter and Mayor Protem Piana. They're aging as we speak, which is fabulous. I also want to talk about the Community Foundation. The Ferndale Community Foundation has its grant season open. They give out, the Community Foundation gives out grants up to $2,500 for projects in the city of Ferndale, supporting education, arts, social services, a litany of things, as long as you're a nonprofit working for the betterment of the city of Ferndale, you're welcome to apply. The grant application can be found on the city's website, so please feel free to look it up there, or you can give me a call at 248-672-4067, and the grants are due back on April 14th. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilwoman Leaks May?
All right. Brief, brief. Okay, so on March 31st, I just want to share that the Ferndale Education Foundation will be having their dinner and silent auction. It's a big fundraiser for this foundation, and it's going to be held at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center for the first time from 6:00 to 10:00, and I'm sure that more details will follow. In fact, I'm sure one of their representatives will be here probably to sell tickets to you all at some point, but March 31st. And second, I just want to wish easy like Sunday, a prosperous journey. I was sorry to see them go, but we love them, and they did, you know, it was a great little hangout establishment in Ferndale, so I wish them well, and thank you for your years of being here. That's it.
Good. Councilman Pollocka?
I just want to thank all of our city departments for their very speedy reaction to the storm last week. Everyone, police, fire, DPW, Parks and Rec even, opening up the warming center, city